Good morning, everyone, and welcome to today's 2024 Budget Presentation Session, City Council Work Session here at the public library. It's very well lit, very welcome morning. Today, Monday, May 15, 2023. I'm going to pass it over to the city manager, who's going to go through the budget summary, and then we're going to have a whole bunch of presentations, leading all the way to, I think, an estimated time wrapping this up is around 3:00. But, some calendar. All right. Manager Connard.
Thank you, Mayor, and welcome, everybody. Thank you, everyone, for attending. Couple of housekeeping rules. The bathrooms are right outside the door. We will plan to take a break between finance and planning and sustainability, so roughly around 10:50, 10:55, and each speaker will come up to the podium. We left you two handouts at your chair. The first one is a reminder of what the city council goals and organizational goals are. The reason we did that is we use the icons throughout the presentation without referring to all the words. So if you see icons, you'll think, oh, yep, what are those? There we go. The second handout, which Judy just provided you with, is a breakdown of the new FTEs. And if it's appropriate, at any point in time, we can speak to that, but we wanted you to have what that means by fund and with salaries and benefits. So with that, I'm going to share the screen, get going. And I'm wondering how I make it full screen, and I'm going to lean on a friend here to find out. Thank you. What's that? Thank you very much. So we will, people have been told to be very efficient with their time, and we will run through a series of our slides. We're really proud of this budget. What we will start with is a reminder to folks of what the directive was back in January, and it was to keep the budget to no more than a 4.5% increase excluding the costs of building out the information technology department. And as such, as referenced last Monday at the budget session, the proposed budget comes in a total of 3.67% increase. So first up is our department. We're really proud of our team. We now have a full complement. And for those new to the budget process, the city manager's office acts as the chief administrative office, the caretaker and the steward of city properties and assets, both physical and human, and our goal is to take care of the people who take care of the city. We, the goal for the next few years would be to maintain and modernize the infrastructure, what, you know, what we currently have, and look to find the best, most efficient ways to do that. And our goals in FY '24 include kicking off Climate Action Plan, Master Plan, Market Square Plan, and increasing city engagement and accessibility to government through our brand-new Director of Communications and Community Engagement. So next up, we will come right into the Public Works Department. Peter Rice will get things started. Welcome, Peter.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Manager Connard. My name's Peter Rice. I'm the Director of Public Works. With me is our Public Works team, the Director of Water Resources and Deputy Director of Public Works, Brian Getz, our Parking Director, Ben Fletcher, our Operations Manager, Roberta Orsini, our Business Administrator, Jennifer Wentworth, and our GIS Stormwater Manager, Jamie McCarty. We wanted to start off with a general introduction to the department to remind folks that we're made up of six divisions, and that by working together, we are able to leverage resources and take advantage of each division's expertise to provide services that benefit residents, businesses, and visitors to the city. Together, we address a number of city council goals as well as city objectives, citywide goals. Brian Getz will speak to water and stormwater and sewer.
Good morning. Thank you, Peter. There is a lot of detail in the budget book, and what I'd really like to highlight, what we chose to highlight here just in the presentation, are really some of the accomplishments, initiatives, major drivers for water, sewer, stormwater. And I like to lead with this slide, which actually shows our staff over at the Connie Bean, just recently at the Earth Day event, and everybody stepped forward, and we had a lot of great hands-on and displays and demonstrations of water quality, water efficiency, our water wastewater, stormwater stuff. So again, reached out to staff, and they came forward, and it was quite a successful event. So with that, I'm going to highlight some of the things that we're dealing with on the water side. We currently are in compliance with all the regulatory requirements. Those continue to evolve, as is always the history on water and continues to be the case. PFAS, most recently, the EPA proposed new lower limits for PFAS, so we're tracking those, and we are identifying potential treatment options we may need in the future, should they be promulgated. But currently, we are in compliance with all the New Hampshire standards. On the sources of supply, though we've had some lovely dry and beautiful weather, we have had precipitation, so currently, I don't have to stand up here during budget time and say we may be faced with a drought. But even so, we do have some new sources of supply online. The Madbury Well 5 is in service, Collins Well 2 is in permitting, and hats off to Al Pratt and his staff for getting that going, and Little Bay Waterline, we're hoping to get a permit on that soon. Next up, this is Tim Green, our Chief Plant Operator over at Pease, and behind him is a filter media pilot. We kind of highlight this when we talk publicly about what we're doing as far as PFAS treatment, and the technologies continue to change. And in recognition of that, we have this pilot system where we actually are testing every day different medias, and we actually are using, when we did a filter changeout just recently, we used one of the better-performing medias to changeout. So that information is very helpful, and again, as we're pressed with the PFAS regulations changing, it's helpful to have the most recent information. Other initiatives for the water side, these are just three of a whole lot of things. In-house staff, so I like to really stress the fact that we have such great staff that it's not only getting stuff done, meeting compliance, it's actually doing initiatives that are saving us money, and actually being able to do stuff in-house with our staff. There's ownership, there's, you know, the cradle to grave, I guess, to get projects done. So this is Jim Siegel. We purchased a meter to do our large meter testing, which previously we had had a vendor come in and do it, and we no longer all have to do that, so we're going to test 72 large meters and save about $16,000. A big watershed mark on the water efficiency. We reached over 1,500 rebates issued through FY '22. Big credit to Judy Renaud and staff there on our billing side, and we do estimate we're saving about 50,000 gallons a day of water, so it's really paying off there. And we, to date, are still the only system in New Hampshire doing these rebates, so I keep pressing that forward and try to put to other water systems how good a thing it really is. The Safe Water Advisory Group meets quarterly. We have two counselors here that attend those meetings and appreciate their input. And one of the things in this budget this year is $2,500 that we've put in the lab budget to do, offer additional lead testing out for the public. So we have that in the budget, and if there's further questions, we can have that. Now on the sewer, we're happy to say the Pierce Island Wastewater Treatment Facility continues to perform very well, and we meet that eight-milligram-per-liter standard. And on the money side, the $35 million state aid grant is just huge on the sewer side. It's, as Judy mentioned in the overview, Judy Blandier, that in the budget overview for the public hearing, this is going to save a considerable amount of money. It's not a one-time $35 million check, it's over the course of 30 years, but it's able for us to reduce what we think we need for rate increase from 6% to 4.5%. We have two new permits. The Pease permit is final for the discharge permit for the wastewater system. In Pierce Island, we most recently just got the updated draft permit, so we're actively working to that. One of the aspects that was in last year's budget, we have hired the in-house staff who's out there working on industrial pretreatment program, doing a great job so far. Awards, again, acknowledging staff. Pierce Island Wastewater just recently was named New Hampshire Treatment Plan of the Year. That's Peter Conroy and staff, big credit to him. And then recently, at a city council meeting, David Lovely, New England Wastewater Operator of the Year. So again, wonderful accomplishments for that staff there. On initiatives, again, there's many, many other things. I just have to do a quick shout-out to Jim Tau and the utility crew for such a great work out there on Market Street to coordinate and get the work done there that was done just recently out there, and a lot of our in-house staff to coordinate and get that accomplished. Buy Self-Aid Tank, this was Dave Lovely's project, and if we had had to hire a contractor to do this work, we estimate about $75,000 we saved. We did have to buy the equipment, but all the in-house work was done. This is Mike Merrill and Skada Crew built these two panels, and again, if we'd had an outside firm do this work, it would have cost us about $50,000 more. Here's our pump station crew, and also Mike Merrill on the bottom left, setting up a new piping and new metering for the pump station. So again, things we're able to do with staff in-house where a lot of systems have to contract or they just don't get done. On the stormwater side, Peter mentioned Jamie McCarty's in the room. This is at Earth Day. We had a hands-on porous pavement on the right of this display and a rain garden on the left to let people see visually and actually pouring water, how good a rain garden does for absorbing water versus pavement. Initiative we brought in-house is Dan, our stormwater tech. We are bringing a lot of our lab work that we've had to shop out. When we do sampling, we send to laboratories. Well, we're doing half of our work now in this budget is going to be in-house, so we anticipate saving about over $20,000 this year in that. And lastly, on stormwater, we've recently corresponded to council on our current hold on the stormwater utility. We don't think it's a hold forever, but given the Conservation Law Foundation recent petition to EPA regarding residual designation, that really impacts how a stormwater utility would be structured and how the components of that, as far as the revenue go. But we'll have more on that. We are actively working with Suzanne Woodland and Peter Rice, meeting and discussing this with the EPA and the CLF, and hope to have some kind of clarity on that soon. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Ben Fletcher, the parking director, to take his portion. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, City Manager Connard, and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to the FY '24 budget this morning. I'd like to start by talking a little bit about services provided or supported by parking revenues, without taking taxpayer dollars. The Division does supply a $2.5 million offset to the general fund annually, in addition to support for services such as transportation planning and engineering, downtown snow and waste removal, school bus support, senior transportation, the downtown trolley, our partners with Coast, police detail, school crossing guards, and the like. Services provided or supported by parking revenues realize an annual tax offset this year of $336 per household. We do this by providing, utilizing a value-based department model. The Division supports businesses by implementing programs such as the stay-and-pay pricing model, where we maintain a level of 91% space turnover at the third hour, which is a city goal designed to provide businesses with a continuous flow of traffic throughout the day. The city supports downtown employees with the Downtown Workforce Parking Program, offering reduced-rate parking at the Foundry Garage for qualified employees of downtown Portsmouth businesses. The Division supports visitors with roughly 60,000 visitors a week through the summer. The Division continuously works to make the city as accessible and easy to navigate as possible, utilizing quality signage, effective event management, and cross-training staffing where available. Also, by continually improving trash collection, recycling, and composting in the downtown area, and by sweeping the streets and providing receptacles, the storm drains and sidewalks are kept free of refuse. Again, the Division supports snow removal, trash collection, senior and public transport, and many other services throughout the city. Looking towards the future, a 2023 parking study is currently underway that will update the 2012 parking principles. This study will evaluate future demand in collaboration with the Planning Department and proactively assess future needs and development where parking can advance those needs. By expanding utilization of the city's in-house parking, transportation engineering team, rather, to assist with planning functions and utilizing the engineering team for parking, traffic, and safety studies, we eliminate contracting expensive outside services wherever possible. Additionally, the recent restructuring of the parking clerk's offices has modernized processes and allowed for cross-training opportunities as the Division continues to develop. Cross-training staff throughout the Division provides the best possible coverage where it's needed to expedite high-quality service delivery. A moment about our staff. The Parking Division takes great pride, I take great pride, in our dedicated and hard-working team of 76 full and part-time employees, again, funded solely by parking revenues. The FY '24 budget reflects staffing and programming that will support the efforts of our workforce and provide resources to go above and beyond expectations again. And finally, parking brings value to the city. Parking revenues directly reduce the median single-family tax bill by $336 this year. Last year was 318, and that's based on the median single-family home of value of $480,100. So with that, I would turn it over to Director Rice to talk about Public Works.
Thanks, Ben. I, you know, it's always, when you see that number come up, it doesn't register in people's minds. They think that, you know, the downtown is just sucking resources away from the city, but it's really important, you know, to emphasize that the Parking Division and the revenues generated there support the functions that are done downtown. It's not the taxes. So I'm really proud of the work, you know, my staff does, but I just feel like I, you know, I need to be really clear on that, because it's, I hear it all the time that people, oh, you know, it's, you know, we're giving all this stuff downtown. It's like, no, the visitors to the city are, you know, giving us the resources to do these things, in addition to snow removal, garbage collection, other things downtown. So it's, sorry to be the dead horse. So Public Works is really the implementer of your ideas. You know, we are the ones that do whatever comes up throughout the city, and we support other departments. It's not clear always in, when you're reviewing the police budget, we clean the police station and maintain, provide the, our budget has the electricity, water in that. School department, we do that area as well. We maintain these facilities, and that's part of the budget that you're, when you approve that, you're supporting the other departments. So that's something that I like to stress as well. Next slide, please. Core functions of the Highway Division are really what you typically think of when you think of highway public works. You know, it's the roads, it's the facilities, it's garbage collection, but we also do mosquito control, we maintain the parks and ballfields, the cemeteries, and we staff special events as well, to name, you know, probably, there's a lot of other things, too. We're a resident-focused approach. Our roadways, although there are specific roads that are, continue to be in rough shape, on an average, we are, the roads are in the best shape they've been since we started tracking them, and that's something that goes to the support that you all have given us over the years and allow us to do the work that we do. We continue to do outreach and try to improve our communications, working with the City Managers Department, and that's an ongoing challenge. We don't always get it right, but we learn from our mistakes, and we try to continue to do better. We're trying to bring more services in-house. In the last couple of years, we've started doing more HVAC work in-house by, because we have qualified staff to do that kind of work, and that helps reduce the overall budget. And we continue to collect data through our C Click Fix program, which has been very helpful, and then we continue to strive to improve our operations as we move forward. Prescott Park, the core functions are really maintaining the gardens and the facilities there. This is a collaborative effort, working closely with the Finance Department, the City Clerk's Office, as well as the Rec Department. So it's, it falls under, the bulk of it falls under our area, but there are other departments that support this as well. We're also help with implementing the Eco Municipality. We continue to do our tree planting programs. As you know, this year, we did 400, planted 400 trees for the 400th. It was a very exciting program, and a lot of folks were really appreciative of it, so that's, that was fun. We do organic materials disposal, and we continue to work with the Planning Department to plan for city-level rise associated with climate change, and our recycling efforts help reduce carbon emissions. And then we also have the Organic Turf Program, which is something that's an ongoing program. The Public Works, this budget supports the level of service expected by our residents for both Prescott Park and our Highway Division. So at this point...
Can we take a breather? We're through with Peter's realm. Perhaps if Council wishes, we could stop with questions on Public Works, or we could keep going. Your call.
Why don't we have questions on Public Works, and then we'll get into Rec?
Great.
Thanks, Your Honor. This is for the previous three speakers, I presume?
Correct.
Okay. This would be, I guess, for Peter Rice. The Prescott Park, is there a way to identify exactly how much that park costs per year with the anticipated capital improvement plan upgrades plus the ongoing maintenance, and how much of a burden specifically that park has?
Well, we have, you know, the budget is funded in part by the trust, about 260, and then the balance is 300 and plus comes from the general fund. There are revenues, but they don't cover the cost of providing the services that we do and the maintenance we do there. The, was your question specifically with the upgrades, what would the additional costs associated with that be, or?
Yeah, like if we were to just look at it, over the next 10 years, how much is Prescott Park going to cost per year, capital improvement, Public Works budget, any other taxpayer-funded?
We could, I don't have that at the mic, you know, kind of organized in that manner. The bonding associated with Prescott Park is projected and is part of the book, the budget book, but we could put that together, if that's something that, for the 22nd?
That would be great. And then a couple of quick follow-ups. The 10,400 pickups for trash, is that one of each? So is that either, you know, 5,000 trash and 5,000 recycling?
Yes.
Okay. And that would be another thing, if, that's one of the few things the city offers that, if I understand correctly, is not required by RSA. It would be nice to know the price tag of trash pickup, as close as that could be approximated.
It is in the budget. I think it's over $1 million if you look at the solid waste section of the budget. I think it's $1 million one. Roberta's looking quickly.
1.7.
1.7, I'm sorry, I was thinking of yesteryear. Fondly.
And that's all of my questions. Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Peter.
Counselor Tabor.
Peter, don't go away. Couple of things. First off, great job reducing the level of outside services. I know that you're bringing more in-house, and that shows, saving for the taxpayers, and it's pretty much a level budget, which is a challenge, and that's great work. I noticed snow removal, we usually were $330,000 a year, we'd budget for that. We're bringing that down to 290, or is that optimistic, or is that based on experience?
Snow removal really didn't reduce significantly. It was, it was based on the change, it was only, I think, 700?
The change to the retirement rate?
It's really just the change to the retirement rate that brought it down a little bit.
Not an operational thing, then?
No.
We leveled the cost for Spinnaker Point for maintenance?
Yep.
That makes me a little nervous. Uh, that makes me a little nervous, given the age of that facility, are we okay with that?
We just invested, um, uh, over a million dollars in the facility. We do not own the facility, and so being cognizant of, of keeping our budget in line, um, it is, it's in, I know there are folks that feel, uh, it, it's neglected, that is not the case. Um, we completely redid the locker rooms, um, there are, you know, there is ongoing maintenance that we do in the facility, um, so it is, it's, it's in good shape, uh, and we do not anticipate, uh, this year needing, uh, additional, uh, resources.
And lastly, just an observation, um, I was looking at the increase in costs to operate our buildings, particularly City Hall, and our older buildings with their old HVAC, and I was looking at this building, which has almost no increase, this is our best LEED-certified building with our most efficient air handling.
Yep.
Is there any lesson in that for?
Um, this building is getting to a point where there's, um, infrastructure improvements needed. Some of the controllers for the heat pumps and things like that throughout the system need to be replaced, however, they fall into the capital, um, line, and if you, if you recall, we used to do every three years a million dollars, um, and we've changed that to be every three years a million dollars, but every year between, five hundred thousand dollars, because, um, historically, we've under-invested in our facilities. Um, and to your point, facilities operate better, and they're cheaper to operate if you maintain them. So we do, we do cover costs associated with this facility, uh, there are a number of things, um, that are needed, we're doing some roofwork here, uh, as well as, um, there's some repointing of brick, uh, brickwork, and, um, the, the last room or between, uh, the joints, uh, needs to be replaced here, um, so we are continuing to keep, uh, this building, it's, it's a great building, people love it, um, it's a really nice space, um, and if you've noticed up at City Hall, we've been doing, uh, roof repairs, um, that is, uh, you know, just to keep that roof from, uh, sliding off. So we're going to be doing repointing, uh, once that roof is done, we're going to be repointing and repairing a lot of the, um, concrete and brick. If you notice, uh, if you look up, you can see there's sections that have been, uh, just decaying, um, so it really needs some attention.
Great. Thank you.
Yep.
Assistant Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Peter, I just have a, just a few questions. Uh, on the number that we have for recycling, we had in, in 2022 budgeted three-ten, uh, actual was only seventy-seven thousand, uh, but in the budget book, we, you note that the actual cost of recycling is going up per ton.
Yep.
So do we, do we, A, if you could just explain kind of why we had that lesser amount? Are we, are we not able to recycle as much? Are we finding more contamination? Are we having to move more items from recycling to solid waste? Do we anticipate that to be a trend?
The, the nature of solid waste is an evolve, we call it the evolving ton, so there's things that you can't recycle because they laminate plastics, um, and people, you know, it's just like the plastic wrappings and stuff like that are not recyclable. Um, our, our solid waste contract, which is coming up for renewal in twenty-five, at the end of twenty-five, um, has an annual escalator of five percent. So for recyclables, we have a, um, it's a hundred and fifteen, uh, per ton this year, and then they either deduct or add, depending upon what value we get out of the, um, out of the recyclable materials. Um, we've had some really difficult years, um, since China shut down, um, what was that, three years ago? And so the, we're averaging about a hundred and thirty on, uh, per ton for recyclables right now. The solid waste number, um, it, it's, it's hard to predict always, um, so we track it and, you know, it's just, it's, it's the nature of the evolving ton, really.
Okay. Um, mind just one more question, as we know that we are, as a community, switching over community power, do we assume that we'll see an overall reduction of electricity costs, um, to maintain our, our facilities?
Uh, at this point, we've negotiated a, a, a two-year agreement for electricity and natural gas. We did this, um, in part, uh, because the, the community power isn't standing up until June of this year, and also, um, and we had to lock in for, you know, budgeting purposes, um, we are, you know, have the opportunity to watch how the community power rolls out and, over the next two years, and if it's appropriate and acceptable, um, to the, to the coalition, um, we could, you know, once we get to the time where we need to renew, instead of renewing, we can just opt into the system. Um, so it was, in, in, from a, from a management standpoint, um, we believed it was prudent, um, to, 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 to do it this way, um, because we couldn't wait, um, and we, we locked into a reasonable rate, uh, relative to the overall cost, so.
Peter's being modest, it's, I think he's at eight cents for the city.
Well, we're, we're at eleven cents now, but.
Wonderful. Thanks for that information.
Any other questions? Council Boyler.
Dick, you're, um, I don't know if this is for finance, or if it's for, um, parking and transportation, um, or if it's for Peter, um, but I just noticed there's a thirteen percent increase under the parking and transportation budget, um, it's over a million dollars. I noticed most of it's under the debt service, but I just wondered if someone could elaborate on that.
Uh, Ben could speak to it, but you're, you're correct, it was because, uh, debt was being brought on.
Okay.
That is the primary driver of five hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars increase in, uh, in debt service, another hundred thousand for plan study as well. Uh, there's a number of, uh, like, one-time, uh, like Coast is increasing ninety-four thousand, there's a seventy-five thousand dollar parking study happening. Uh, if you look at the overall budget, it's a thirteen-point-one percent increase, but if you take those factors out of it, it's closer to four and a half percent.
Okay.
Um, under the, where am I? Again, under parking and transportation, I just see a significant increase in, um, professional services, security. Is that, is that, um, where is that coming from?
So typically, we, we have security and, and, and police services in the downtown, uh, the, both garages, you know, particularly over the summer, on the weekends, kind of just maintains the peace a little bit, and, uh, because we do get some rowdy folks that come through the garages, so that's what that's about.
Okay, that's, but the, it's increased from last year.
Right. We, yeah, we have dramatically reduced that over the course of the last couple of years through the COVID situation, we had a lot less traffic, so we didn't, didn't see the need for it, so we cut it back. So the increase is probably a little bit closer to, you know, what it was prior to that ripple.
Uh, Mr. Tabor. Ben, while you're with us, um, I was noticing that, um, the revenue from High Hanover dips about nine percent, but we know that there's a thirty percent reduction in the spaces due to, um, the renovation that we're doing. So I was curious about that, um, forecast for...
So you'll recall, over the course of the last few years, we've been trying to reduce the number of monthly parking at that facility because we didn't want to have to actually ask people to leave when we lost the space, so we've, we've encouraged folks, uh, through pricing to get, to move them over to the foundry garage. The fact of the matter is, is that transient parking makes a lot more money, turning the spaces over, than monthly parking does. So, uh, through efficient management, even with the reduction of space, and, and close, like this weekend, we closed the garage multiple times, but we also reopened it multiple times. Uh, there are electronic counters that we, that we operate from, and, and there is a buffer that we keep for, for monthlies that we would expect to come home at any given, back to the garage at any given particular time, but, uh, effective and efficient management of the transient space is why you see less of a gap there than you might have expected.
Great.
Council Bagley.
Um, thank you, Your Honor. I'll just, um, since I, on PTS, I get to spend a lot more time in investigating parking issues than most, I'll just point out, I believe, uh, in the last five years, parking revenues have gone up tremendously. So, uh, I just want to kind of give a shout-out that, you know, this is probably the only part of city government that actually generates, uh, a profit, if you will, and the work by Director Fletcher and the whole parking team has really honed in on two things. One, behavior management, which is getting that high turnover, uh, we have a great utilization of the downtown worker program, which saves our downtown workers' money, but also frees up spaces on the street in front of shops, so it adds to economic vitality of the city, and it generates a lot more revenue for the city, uh, because we're doing both of those things. So if you look at, uh, what the Parking Department's done, it's made our downtown more vibrant, but it's also provided, uh, significant, uh, cost savings to the taxpayer, and I just want to keep beating that drum.
Mr. Council Bagley. Any other questions? It's Ben, it's Peter, Brian.
Thank you to the whole Public Works team. All right, we resume with recreation, and let's see if I can't learn from what Monty just said. I'm Todd.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council. I'm Todd Henley, Recreation Director, and I'm happy to speak with you about the great work we are doing for the city. Our department oversees four different budgets, recreation and senior services out of the General Fund, and community campus and indoor pool, which are special revenue funds. Next slide, please. We are here to improve the quality of life for the citizens of Portsmouth, and we do that by providing the services that you see here. Youth, adult, and senior programming, senior services of transportation, health and wellness, aquatics, childcare and after-school programming, community events, fitness and athletics, field and court management, social well-being, education and enrichment, and staffed public water access. Next slide, please. We have a small staff of seven people, although there's only six in that picture, it's because we just hired our new Connie Bean supervisor, who actually starts today. Um, however, between the seven of us and a great group of part-time staff, we operate the following facilities and major programs, such as the community campus, Connie Bean Center, indoor and outdoor pool, pier, silent boat launch, and kayak racks, and ambassadors, uh, Prescott Park Marina, recreation athletic field, the Senior Activities Center, special events, Spinnaker Point, South Mill Pond Complex and courts, and our summer camps. Some highlights of this past fiscal year are shown here. We are completing our first full year in the community campus this month. We have moved our main offices there, and the additional space has helped us add almost thirty new programs to our offerings. In fact, since FY21, we have been able to increase the amount of programs offered by our department by almost five times to a hundred and five, and that's just the recreation side, not the indoor pool, um, not the senior services, just the recreation side. And we're not done yet, we've continued to make improvements to the building and the surrounding property, like installing eight more pickleball courts, plus the two we completed indoors this, in the gym this winter. We envision the community campus to become a home base in the city for a variety of programs, sports, passive recreation, education, city meetings, and more. We also completed our recreation needs study, which was presented to you in March, by collecting community feedback and getting valuable data to help inform facility needs, programming needs, and demographic-focused areas. We are also very excited about the new skate park, a true community-driven project that will be the anchor to the property with more possibilities in the future as to what can go there. This project has put a highlight on skateboarding, and we partnered with a local nonprofit, First Push Syndicate, uh, to provide intro-to-skateboarding sessions to a hundred and sixty children since the fall. I think there will be a whole new generation of skateboarders being grown out of this Highlighting the goals that we achieved, inviting and honoring input from the community, and again, and encourage increased participation of youth, we did this by completing the recreation needs study and by continuing to, uh, offer affordable or free programs and events throughout the year. We also worked with the school department to offer bus service to the campus so that children can come directly to our after-school programs that we offered. We had four hundred and fourteen participants attend after-school programs this school year. Consistently communicate with community members. We are utilizing social media, our digital and print newsletters, and our digital and print program guides to promote and communicate with residents. We reach over eleven thousand people between our newsletter and social media. Leverage local resources and partnerships to improve and support needs of residents, nonprofits, arts and culture community. At the campus, we house five important nonprofits, Seacoast Community School, Cremples Center, Child Advocacy Center, Portsmouth Adult Ed, and Seacoast Outright. We have partnered with PMAC, New Hampshire Theater Project, Portsmouth Historical Society, and Forest Kids, for example, to offer various programs throughout the year. We are excited for what is ahead. We are looking to hire a new recreation supervisor to focus on campus, the community campus youth programming, and building an in-house after-school program, similar to the YMCA or PEAK. We continue to invest in the campus and create better flow amongst tenants, better security, and new spaces for our programs. We look forward to welcoming Robert J. Listor Academy and coordinating, coordinating new events with the library and offer joint programs with our tenants. The indoor pool is also a focus of ours. After completing major facility projects last year, we hope to get back to full hours and more normal schedule, but that has been especially difficult due to staffing issues. We are proposing to hire a full-time lifeguard that will be able to help fill the gaps of coverage needed, open the pool on the weekend, and free up our pool supervisor to do her administrative duties rather than be filling in for open guarding spots. We are also committed to offering more open public swim times and increase our swim lesson offerings. Attracting and retaining new staff with higher wages is a major goal so that we can be competitive amongst the Seacoast aquatic facilities. Uh, I thank you for letting me speak about the good work that we are doing for the city, and I hope to continue to do for our residents and families, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Question, Doug. Assistant Mayor.
Hi, Todd, I think you know what I'm going to ask. Uh, I was just, uh, over the last year, we have discussed adding a disc-off course, uh, and I know the last, um, update was, uh, potentially a, um, merger with the, uh, urban forestry as the State Department, or Parks Department, Forestry, has done that in other communities, so I was just looking for an update on that.
Sure. Um, I think when we, when I gave you the report back, it was, it was about a twenty-five to thirty-thousand-dollar, um, cost associated with that, um, and at this time, we don't have that in our budget, um, or available to us, so I, I'd be looking to see where we can get the funding for that from.
Okay.
Uh, Council Tabor.
Thanks, Todd. I'm familiar with the indoor pool, I've gone there, and it's not open at eight because we can't staff it, but I think the hard-nosed question would be, if we filled all the lifeguard positions we have now, filled the vacancies, would we need the full-time person?
Well, it's a good question, um, however, what we have currently is a large group of part-time staff, retirees, high school kids, you know, everyone in between. So the problem isn't necessarily, um, getting more part-timers, because some of those, like, if you're, if, if we have a high school student that's a lifeguard, they're obviously only able to work certain hours. So it's, it's more about trying to find one person that can kind of work a more broad range across the board during the day, um, to be able to fill all those different positions.
Right, and also, um, your new recreation supervisor, are we, uh, have we come back to pre-COVID levels of participation yet?
We have, and we've increased it.
Okay, so in other words, usage is going up?
Absolutely.
Um, if we didn't hire that additional recreation supervisor, what would we lose?
Um, well, the, you know, we invested in the community campus, um, we, we moved our main offices there and everything, and, and we have really highlighted, um, having our programs there. If, you know, as you know, the Connie Bean Center that we've had for, for years was really just a gymnasium, there's no real classroom space there or anything to hold other types of classes beside sports. Um, so getting the campus was huge for us, um, to be able to offer all the different enrichment programs and STEM programs, uh, after-school programs, um, preschool programs, uh, you know, across the board, all the different things that we are able to offer there. So, um, that, that recreation supervisor is going to really help us, uh, be able to, uh, A, grow our after-school program, build a full-time after-school program in the future here in the next, you know, year or two, um, and just help us regulate more of what's happening there. Um, right now, it's kind of a, uh, all hands on deck over there, myself, Bridget, our office manager, and Brenner, our assistant director, who are kind of, you know, we're, we're dealing with tenants, we're renting rooms, we're also running programs, getting kids off the bus, all that stuff, so, um, just really need that other person to help, you know, coordinate all that and, and make it successful.
Thanks.
Council Good. Oh, Council Bagley.
Um, thank you, uh, and thank you so much for explaining, um, what you're, um, why you're requesting, um, these additional staff members. Do you anticipate that we are going to have the level of busing we need from the schools to fully, um, to have full participation in the programs you're anticipating at community campus?
Yeah, that's a great question. Um, this year was, uh, a little tight at first, um, because of the lack of bus drivers that they had, um, but we knew that it was such a resource to get, you know, for parents to be able to have kids... have kids just go directly from, from the schools to us. So working with the school department and the bus company, we made it work, and I foresee us continuing to make that work because it's such a vital program.
And as a follow-up to that, you said you were also adding programming so that we have programs that are kind of competitive what is, with what is available in the community already. Do we know that if PEAK is fully subscribed, how many children are on waitlists for those programming that we could potentially see moving into our programming?
My intention would be to have a program that would probably have about 50 kids in it, and I have actually been in contact with the Seacoast Community School Executive Director. We've already had initial conversations about how do we do this together, because we don't want to take anybody away from each other's programs. It's more of, you know, now that we're at the campus with, you know, in collaboration with them, how can we make this better for all the parents across the board? And in having conversations with the different principals, and I'm a father of two myself, and my kids are in the system, so, you know, I've seen it firsthand that just, there's just a lack of programming for after-school and for more and more, you know, not just one-off classes, but really having someplace for kids to go right directly after school and have coverage for the next couple hours after that.
And I have one final question related to the senior services. I noted that we're adding two part-time staff members in senior services, but actually our salaries are declining. Can you explain that model to me?
Yeah, those part-time members have always really been there since the beginning, so it was just more of an update to what the numbers actually are. And in senior services, you'll see that we did decrease that budget, and that's, that's due to being able to be there for, you know, more than a year now, and really getting actual numbers about what everything costs in that new building, so.
Thank you.
Counselor Bagley.
Thank you, Your Honor. And thanks for the presentation. I have a, I'm going to have a couple questions, but first I'll make a comment. There's been a lot of concern from residents about the increases to the budget, and a lot of those things are driven by things that we have to do. Unfortunately, things that all of us enjoy, like recreation, say the library department, are in the nice-to-have area. Now, I personally think that they're essential, especially coming back from COVID, so I'm not proposing any cuts. However, if we were to make cuts to the budget, unfortunately, those two departments are probably ones that would have to have cuts. So with that being said, we do have, as a city, like we have three pools, which is more than, I would say, most cities of our size. We have a lot of rec opportunities, which I think are good for our community, but those all come at a cost, as we see here in the budget. I think we have about 1,000 residents who use Spinnaker Point. I think I've heard from all 1,000 about how important that is to them, so I'm not proposing any cuts there. But I do think it would be helpful to the community at large if we could have an explanation of what each of these major locations costs in the budget, so that people understand where their, their money is going to and to which area. And the other thing that I think would be helpful is if there are ways to look at the different fees that we, we charge, say for the boat launch, for the kayak, for Spinnaker Point, for instance, and is there anywhere we can increase them and possibly increase them in a way where there's a sliding scale so that, you know, those of us that can afford to pay a little bit more for a membership would, which would reduce the overall burden to the taxpayer? Because I do think the rec does a tremendously important job, but we do have to be mindful of the costs.
Yeah, I'm happy to get you those numbers on the pools. And in terms of the fees, we did actually go up in a lot of the fees in the last couple of years, including at the outdoor pool, at the indoor pool, at Spinnaker Point memberships, so all of those have increased a little bit. But, you know, I'd be happy to bring the sliding scale idea maybe to the Recreation Board and have a discussion about that, absolutely.
Great. Thank you.
Counselor Bagley, yeah, I, you know, on the fees, I don't know if we can charge a different fee based on income. I'm not entirely sure that that's possible. Our state constitution is pretty, pretty rigid in the fact that all, at least taxes have to be leveled equally, but be interested if there was some, some sort of sliding scale. As having one kid in the system, and I love that term, Todd, in the system, and one on the way, been really impressed with the level of services that, that we have. The, and I think most parents, and then some older grandparents, my mother included, really impressed when they find out about the services. I think young kids with young families get to find out just because of the fact you, you need after-school care, and you find out it's, it's really, it's really effective. Two questions that I have. First, you'd mentioned Forest Kids. My daughters goes to Forest Kids. It's a fantastic program that lets kids, rain or shine, today is a nicer day, but it can be snowing out, and they're still out there trudging around in the great bog or in the Sagamore Headlands. Are there, have we looked at other, you know, potential avenues for partnering, you know, with the system for things like Forest Kids, which is a, is a privately-run organization?
I have not, in, in terms of, I know, like, Don Darrow hired their own nature-based teacher now and stuff, so that would be a great thing to, to look into. Before, it was more of just, you know, finding out people in the community like Sarah and Forest Kids that offered some of those things, and being able to just partner with them to see, you know, to have them come over to the campus and utilize the campus grounds for, for those types of programs. But absolutely, I think that's a great idea.
And then John asked a similar question in terms of Counselor Tabor. And I think, you know, I know the answer, but I'd like to ask it a different way. So we were hiring a full-time lifeguard so that they are full-time, and the, the, you know, the potential for something to come up, you know, in a part-time and have to cancel the, you know, that hour, I get that. But is there a way that we can, there's a lot of, I know seniors have asked me in terms of volunteering, is there a way or a program that we could allow folks that, that want to give back to their community, have more time to give back to their community, to formalize that more effectively and publicize that? I know Dover, I think, does something similar where they have many more volunteer hours being carved out by folks that, that are retired and want to be involved in some way?
I mean, the tricky part with that is, you know, you do have to be a certified lifeguard in order to...
Sure, maybe not lifeguards, I guess, but, you know, for manning other, manning other operations.
Yeah.
My nan is, or my mother's not going to be a lifeguard.
But the way our indoor pool operates is it's really run by two to three guards at once, so one's out on the deck, one is at the front desk, and then they give each other breaks every half hour.
Sure, so just taking maybe that, because it brought up John's point, understand lifeguards and where we're, we're going with that in the full-time, support that based on the fact that the reliability of a full-time lifeguard is so that we have predictable hours, much more so than we have today. I'm thinking about as we expand into other services throughout the city and try to find, you know, the biggest cost of government is the, the people that are, are there. With community campus growing, there's more people there, and with more services, there's more people. Has there been thought of as we grow these, these services to provide more avenues of volunteerism throughout the city in terms of, you know, maybe manning a front desk or providing a after-school program and a line, a senior that wants and has the time to spend it with, in a way that could be more, at least streamlined from a city system standpoint?
Sure. Yeah, sorry, I thought you were talking just about the indoor pool. No, we actually already do utilize volunteers for a lot of our programs. At the Senior Activities Center, pretty much all of our instructors are all volunteer instructors. As you know, you were a volunteer coach for some of our sports and things like that, so we do utilize volunteers as much as we can in certain areas, but, you know, the, being able to train someone up on our recreation software and, and all the different policies that we have, it is a little hard to have them in, in situation or roles where they're at the front desk or, you know, answering the phone to, to answer questions and such. So we do utilize them, and I just think we utilize them in slightly different ways.
Thanks, Todd. Counselor Lombardi.
Thank you, Mayor. Just, just a comment about the pools. Having grown up next to the ocean all my life and lived by next to the ocean all my life, had, has always been an assumption that one of the most important things you can do for people who live next to the ocean is teach them how to swim. And I think that's an incredibly important piece that we should look at as well. So I, I, I think staffing the pool and making sure that everyone knows how to swim in this area is very important.
Counselor Cook.
Sorry to have another question, but you sparked me thinking about this when you were talking about a teacher at Don Darrow who has particular experience in outdoor education. Something that we've always done in the Y system is employ teachers to operate after-school programming in the schools. Has there been an effort between recreation and the schools to offer teachers the opportunity to provide recreation opportunities in their classrooms after school?
Currently, as far as I understand, they, they do have their own different programs that they offer, so they do that themselves. We were more partnering with them to get kids to us for the other kids that weren't necessarily in those programs or, you know, weren't able to sign up for those programs, so.
Counselor Tabor.
Quick follow-up on the pool. Looks like we have a membership revenue around $290,000. And, you know, our fee committee always looks at fees saying, we, we want to cover our costs and nothing more so we give the best value to the city. But if we need full-time people, you know, I'm a pool user, I would pay another buck or two a month, so the pool was always open when, when I expect it to be open. So wondering if that's an avenue to make that, not, not out of the general fund, but out of...
Yep. Like I said, we, we did go up in our indoor pool fees this last fiscal year, so we did just do that recently, but we're welcome to revisit that again for next year.
Counselor Boyler.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Todd. I'll just add that I think it's quite impressive running all these facilities. I noticed there's only six full-time employees. You know, I'm looking at the library, there's 16 full-time employees plus 14 part-time, so I just add that. I know you're asking, you know, for a couple more positions, but I'd just say I'm quite impressed, the fact that we've run all these programs, all these facilities, with such few people.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Your Honor, and I just want to reiterate again how important I think the programs that you offer are, especially to, to the children and seniors coming out of COVID. So to kind of follow up on my fee comment earlier, one thing maybe we could look into if we can't do a sliding scale is I think we have some scholarships, but maybe there's a, there's a way we can offer more scholarships and have the fees be the same. And the other thing, I believe there's about 300 non-resident members at Spinnaker Point, and we do charge non-resident fees for most of the recreation things.
We do.
I don't know if those are regulated, how much more they can be versus resident fees, but we really have to look for, for revenue anywhere we can, so that would be something also to look at, is the non-resident fees, if you could.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Todd. Thank you.
Thanks, Todd. Next up, we have CIO Pat Ainsworth, and we'll be talking about information technology. Welcome, Pat.
Good morning. I am Patricia Ainsworth, Chief Information Officer for the city. It's been my pleasure to lead the effort to build a robust City of Portsmouth IT department. I appreciate the initiative and the support of the council to make this happen. Six months in, the build-out of IT is well underway and, in fact, is ahead of schedule. Today's IT team is shown here. We are fortunate to have attracted staff with deep experience and strong technical skills that are required for success. We are developing into a collaborative, focused team with our eyes on the mission. The FY '24 IT budget request includes two additional positions, which will complete the staffing for the foreseeable future. They are, first, an engineer to design and oversee the advancement of technology and to resolve particularly challenging technical issues in-house. The second position is a project manager to ensure the city's technology moves forward expeditiously with tight controls over timelines and project resources. A steady stream of projects must become the norm. Projects will include new applications for the benefit of citizens and city departments, as well as infrastructure build-out and refresh. Of particular note is the deployment of a new finance system. This project alone will be a game-changer. It will take three to four years from RFP to go live, and a strong project manager who knows the city will be an imperative and go a long way to controlling the project costs. City departments and citizens are already feeling the positive impact of the new IT team. Twenty-two projects have been completed just to stand up the technology necessary for the IT team to accomplish its mission. Concurrently, multiple projects long anticipated by departments have been completed or are underway, and we currently have a queue of 23 more projects, and we're just getting started. As a certified information security professional, security and resiliency are a top priority for me. Without that, the rest doesn't matter. We improve security and reduce risk through the deployment of robust, redundant, modern infrastructure components, combined with state-of-the-art monitoring and alerting tools. We have made impressive advances in this area already. We can see deeply into the network at a granular level, quickening the identification and resolution of issues. IT has deployed proven strategies, such as multi-factor authentication, to make it more difficult for malicious actors to succeed. This work will never be done since the bad guys will always evolve their tactics. In two months, CISA, the Cybersecurity and Infrastructure Security Agency, an arm of homeland security, will conduct a risk assessment of IT at the city and provide us with a prioritized roadmap to mitigate weaknesses found. Interestingly, the Russian government, for example, has a government department focused on hacking for warfare and commercial advantage. At this time, that department has 50 hackers for every FBI agent in our country, and it's the FBI that is the responder to cybersecurity threats. Focusing on business continuity, we have completed the build-out of a disaster recovery site to ensure that the city's business will continue even if staff are unable to occupy City Hall. Slide. New software will improve efficiency in all city departments. More efficient departments can accomplish more work with the same number of staff, helping control costs in all departments while improving service. Some examples will include a board management city, a board management system for the city council's work, a case management system for a legal department, a policy management system, so policies are consolidated in one place and accessible to all. And finally, the finance system, which will eliminate time-consuming processes that could be automated, freeing up the staff to do more work. At the end of the day, IT is a service organization. IT is developing metrics to set as baselines that will then be tied to improvement goals. Delivering excellent technical service requires skilled staff as well as consulting specialists at the ready. Excellent service also requires significant investments in infrastructure. The ultimate measure of our success is the satisfaction of those we serve. There will be formal feedback mechanisms to ensure we know what we need to improve and to celebrate our successes. I look forward to your questions.
Thank you, Pat. Counselor Lombardi.
A couple of questions. One is, what, a significant part of security on... One is, what, a significant part of security on any network is training for people using the network. What are your plans for that?
You're exactly right. People need significant training. The projects that we roll out that will involve end-users, not necessarily infrastructure, will always have a training component. We just rolled out Office 365, and that includes Teams functionality, which did not exist at the city, and we just completed a training program on that software, but that's part of the standard routine. You stand something up, you train people, you document, and then you make all that information available on a continuing basis.
Then the second question is, the outside IT support, that budget is going up rather than down. Can you explain that?
Yes. First of all, any IT team needs outside support. My last position, I had a team of 50, and we required outside support. That's because you occasionally need specialized skills that you could not afford to have in-house, nor could you keep that person busy. So as we bring modern technology online, we need experts in those technologies to come and help us with design and implementation. It's, it's most like if you have a primary care doctor, that's the one you go to all the time. If you have a heart problem, you go to a specialist for cardiology. If you have a bone problem, you go to the ortho. So we are the heart, we are the primary care, if you will, but you will always need those specialists to handle unique situations.
Thank you. Counsel Bagley.
Thank you, Your Honor. Some general comments and then a question, less about the budget and more moving forward. IT obviously didn't exist, you know, 30, 40 years ago. It's, it's something that, you know, as modern technology has evolved, has become essential. We use it throughout the city, click and fill, work orders, basically every job in the city, I think, for the most part, depends on IT. So, you know, we have, we have to have it, and we, yeah, it's subject to attacks and things like that. So I'm glad last year that we brought it in-house, and understand that we'll have to add personnel to the team, because as you bring things in-house and, and develop the framework, that's just what's going to happen. So I understand where we're headed, and I'm okay with where we're headed. The concern I have is because of the way that technology evolved, is we have IT in the police department, in the fire department, in the school systems, in public works throughout the city, and there's a lot of disparity and a lot of different silos. I would really like to see some sort of long-term plan over the next five years to consolidate as much as possible under your department so that we don't have all these different cost centers that we might be able to get some economies of scale if there was more unification. So I support the work that the IT team is doing, understand the vast challenges and the costs associated with it, but I would like us to, to try and consolidate as much of these types of functions under one department as possible.
Counsel Bagley, Assistant Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you for your explanation, and Counsel Lombardi for the question of the software. My question is, so could we assume that this major increase is not long-term as we, or is it, as we transition into these new programs, we, we would assume we'd see this increase for a year or two, and then we would essentially see large cuts in, in that as we are only needing, you know, the, the specialists and the outside companies for kind of one-off experiences?
The short answer is no.
Okay.
The nature of technology is that it changes every day. All the different components, the applications, the hardware, everything changes. In order to stay current, this work of rebuilding the infrastructure and deploying new applications is going to be continuous. If we pause, we will actually slide backwards. And the place we're coming from, I can only compare to, it costs so much to buy a hamburger at McDonald's, and I think what you want and need is steak and potatoes.
Or Lexi's.
Yes. So IT costs traditionally, I would be telling you something that was incorrect if I could set expectations that it would go down. That's not the reality.
Thanks, Pat. Is it possible for the 22nd to get a, a more detailed breakdown of those costs and also potential things that we do think we're going to reduce? As in, you said we're bringing on teams, so I would assume the need for a larger-scale Zoom account is going to diminish some and, and some of those things. So if we could get a breakdown, I think that would be great.
Yes.
Thank you.
Counsel Morel, and then Counsel Tabor.
Thank you for this. I, in what I do for a living, I work with a lot of software systems that make your life a little bit easier. Could you go into a little bit more about how, is there a possibility that because of these processes, we might actually save money budgetary-wise as we bring on? You talked about, you know, three years to get the financial, but then you talked about other departments and how this might actually decrease our need for more staff as that goes on?
Exactly. This will create efficiencies in all departments. What you do with that efficiency is a choice. The little I know about the city having been here for six months, there's plenty that needs doing. So if we made a department more efficient, we would be able to produce more of the work that people have been waiting for. The alternative, I don't think is feasible, you know, to, you certainly don't want to reduce staff, because there's so much that needs to be done, but technology's going to be able to make them work faster and to free them up so that they can do more. That's where your savings is going to come, because in, in another scenario, they might have been asking for more staff because the paper process has become too onerous, and hopefully, technology would mitigate that across the board.
Being a many-year land use board member, we obviously have moved to a lot of electronic means, which has been quite nice over the last decade. Will we be able to continue that and make that more efficient? Because I know sometimes there's some glitches in that system.
I think all of the systems we have could use improvement.
I would say, Pat and Kelly can work together to make sure that the system for pushing out board and commission packets gets more streamlined.
Yes. Thank you.
Counsel Cook, do you have a...
Yes. Thank you, Your Honor, and thank you so much for your presentation. So when I look at this budget, I'm struggling a little because it's up $1.16 million in just two years. I realize that's a lot of staffing, and it's a lot of shift in programming, but when we initially made these changes last year and created kind of an IDT department, we were told that that would be a shift in costs, not really additional, significant additional costs, that essentially we'd be moving away from contracted services in-house. So I'm struggling with the, this significant increase in this short period of time, and I'm wanting to know how we can, we, how we can cover those costs differently by reducing redundancies, say, in the school department that has eight, eight individuals working in IT there, or the police department that has an IT manager, an IT admin, an, an operations admin. So where can we more immediately find redundancies and eliminate those to help cover some of these costs?
The siloed IT departments grew organically out of need, and many of them are very good. They're focused on the mission of the department, and they answer to the department head, so they're in sync, and that's a good thing. We do need to bring all of IT together just for the buying power, just so we're all on the same page with technology, we're buying the same equipment so that we can help each other. I believe that process starts not by saying, all IT people have to report to IT. I think the way to do that is to start by having collaboration between the different IT departments. My concept is that we would meet once a month, we would talk about what each of us are doing, learn, help each other, start to work as a larger cohesive team without disrupting that relationship between that IT department and their head, who tells them what is needed. And down the road, there may be some departments that IT could then subsume and bring them together, but to do that in a rush would cause disruption in service, unhappy employees, and unhappy department heads who are used to being able to direct their own IT teams. So it's a goal that we have to walk towards, not run towards.
Your Honor.
Oh, Counsel Tabor. Pat, I'm a big supporter of this effort, as you know, and I think it's a strategic move to make services better over the long haul. I'm sensitive to Counselor Cook's comment, because it's a big ramp-up. You know, we were FY22, 733,000, FY23, a million two, FY24, a million nine. But I'm hearing that this staffing is what you need. Go forward.
Yeah, the staff we have plus the two additional, I believe, will complete the team for the foreseeable future.
Right. And in a $137 million, 1,000-employee city, reinvesting a million and a half dollars to get good systems is probably the right strategy. I ran a business with about one-fifth the size of the city, but 200 employees, and, as we went through larger owners, they would bring in more sophisticated technology, and we would, I would say, you can't do that with that few people, and they'd say, yes, you can, and they would prove it time after time. That's not the point. I think you're very wise about organically spreading this technology so that people are free to concentrate on services to people. But one of the big areas that we learned you could gain efficiencies was in billing. And you think of all the billing that we do with parking in the garages, and tax bills, and water bills, and sewer bills, and if we could automate all of those, all of those have man-hours attached to them in the departments, processing all that billing, and that just seems to me an area that we could fairly quickly see a lot of efficiency. Would you...
That's exactly the way we want to go. We were initially focused on correcting things in the infrastructure that caused great risk. Matter of fact, within a week or two, we're going to replace the core switches, which is the heart of the whole network, because we have currently six small switches, which are all interconnected with cabling. They don't even have backup power supply, right? And so when we replace that, we're going to be getting two state-of-the-art core switches that will work in redundancy, they'll talk to each other at 25 gig, they can see Level 3 traffic, which means I am not just saying this link is very busy, I can look at that link and I can see what's running on it. I can see 10% of the traffic is Facebook, 6% is email. You know, 50% is somebody from the outside downloading our data. So the, the intelligence of these components is what will enable us to, to move forward. Once we feel like we're rock-solid on the infrastructure, because that's where the risk is, then my job is to go to various departments, understand their pain points, and start to talk to them about applications that are going to make their work smarter and more efficient.
But could you comment about the, the man-hours involved in billing, and is that an area ripe for automation?
I'm sorry, could you rephrase that just a little?
Can we streamline all the different bills we send out?
Oh.
And, and make, make some improvements in efficiency there?
Yes. I mean, the, the finance ERP is really the load star. That's going to impact reporting, it's going to impact citizens directly because of ease of dealing with the city on financial issues. It's going to eliminate a lot of paper processes, even within the city. Our payroll process is somewhat paper, and that needs to go away so that people can quickly submit their time without running pieces of paper around the building. There's plenty of examples where that can be done.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you, Pat. Just a, a comment. When we talk about efficiencies, I think that, you know, the majority of our cost in city government is for people. That should be plenty apparent to folks that have been paying attention to the, the budget process of that, you know, half of it's education. So there's a, there's a lot that goes on that, that might not be automatable. Trash pickup, you know, when we have robots doing that, I'm going to be concerned, you know, just given the advancements in AI. But on that, that subject, you know, Coke just released an ad that was basically, you know, most of it was done with AI. It was a pretty cool ad, goes through all of the, the, the great painting masterpieces and creates a pretty impressive structure. AI's application to the City of Portsmouth is probably going to be, you know, limited until it's not. And the biggest thing that I hope that, and I think we are doing that, is having a, a good foundational understanding of the data that, that we have within City Hall, understanding how to protect that data, but then leverage that data in a way that is going to create efficiency. And the thing that, that jumps to mind, at least right now, is on the legal side, when we have to do a right-to-know request, you know, being able to train a system to search for all of the emails and then understand if those emails are relevant, that is, you know, something we can't really charge for, or at least more than, I think, a few bucks for on the state level, but is a huge resource to be able to tell. Like, that's one of the things that if we have a strong system that is able to understand the intent of those emails, we'll be able to increase. And I think your question, or your, your, your question posed to us and will be posed to future councils, if we can create efficiencies through technology, the question is then, what do we do with those efficiencies? Do we, do we stop providing more services, or do we provide more services? I think our goal should always be to have that question in the future. When we create the efficiency, what do we do with that efficiency? And is it to provide more, or is it to continue to, to provide what we have with, you know, eventually, you know, a, a lowering of, of future hires and headcount? So thank you very much for coming out, riding the ship in terms of a, a security standpoint, and as we do, you know, hopefully, we'll have more of those questions of what do we do with these efficiencies? Look forward to those.
Thank you.
All right. I'm going to have to take a five-minute recess just because, to use the restroom and then come back here in five minutes. Thanks.
workload, as you heard from Pat. We've been talking a lot about a case management system for the legal department that will help us not only with the work, producing the work, but also keeping track of what's going on in the legal department. And we've also started to think about, could we use any type of artificial intelligence? There's a lot of programs out there for legal to review contracts and other documents, at least to save time in the comparison, contrast of a contract and other documents, and also in drafting legal documents. So, one more slide. So, what I'm proposing in our new team would include myself and then moving Trevor McCourt up to deputy city attorney. Attorney Sullivan of council, attorney Woodland of council, attorney Farini, who's been here a long time, changing her title to senior assistant city attorney, and then maintaining Kathleen Dwyer as an assistant, and having the new staff attorney slash assistant city attorney, along with the prosecutors, the victim advocate. And then we have, in our admin, we have our zoning enforcement officer, Jason Page, and our administrative assistants, Cynthia, Donna, and Marion. So, I'll entertain any questions that you have.
Any questions? Councilor Boylock.
Thank you, Your Honor, and thank you, Attorney Morell. Noticed under the zoning enforcement officer, it's changing to one half. Just could you touch on that? Is that, is Jason going into part-time?
No, no, but we had determined that he's doing an awful lot of work for parking and DPW, so they are going to pick up half of his salary. And that's one way that we tried to balance the request for new attorney was to cover the costs from a different location for Jason.
If I might add to that conversation, we scaled back Attorney Sullivan's hours from 25 currently to 15 per week, again, in an attempt to maximize, essentially, dollars.
Right.
Thank you.
And I think you'll notice there Attorney Farini, if you don't know, she's also paid out of parking for a certain percent, so her line item says 60% versus 40%. She's paid out of parking. No other questions?
This is, there's a lot of work that goes on in this, and I think, appreciate all the work that you've done on behalf of the city in your short time here. Look forward to what you will continue to do.
Thank you all. We'll see you tonight.
Thanks. Just a handful.
I did have a question, though, on, was Trevor's headshot, did he have a mustache in that?
He did kind of look that way. I was thinking the same thing.
It's a mustache. Okay, I just want to make sure I saw that correctly.
I think it's a shadow, but I'm gonna...
Is it a shadow? It's tough. My eyes are, okay. All right.
I'm gonna mention that.
HR's rolling in the gray. Welcome, Judy.
Okay, thank you. I'm Judy Buangjo, Director of Finance and Administration, and we're moving along to the finance department. And the finance department is typically made up of like three or four different areas. We have assessing, tax collection, and then our accounting and billing. Finance actually kind of leads the city in this fiduciary responsibility, and this fiduciary responsibility is shared with every single department within this area in the city. So, there's great collaboration when it comes to finance. The assessing department is led by Roseanne Lenz, who is here this morning with me, and the tax collection offices is led by Nancy Bates, who is also here, if there's any additional questions. And then we have Andrew Pergo, who's the deputy finance director, and Judy Renaud, who is not here today with us, but she's the controller in overseas water sewer billing. And she also does accounting for the trustees of trust funds. I also have Abby Mills, who is our like budget coordinator and assistant, who does a tremendous amount of work and also helps in the tedious process of the publications of the budget book and the ACFA and the PAFRA and the capital improvement plan. So, she has a very big role there. The finance department is, does have 23 full-time employees. Many of us are seen on a regular basis, especially in the tax office and assessing, but there's also a handful of us that are really not visible. So, I just wanted to kind of introduce the people in that area. We do follow a lot of the city council goals regarding sustainability, delivering trusted and transparent and responsive process, and we have continuing conversations and information that is out there to our stakeholders. Maintain fiscal stability is very important, and I take a lot of pride in that particular area, and I think we give a lot of credit to the great staff of finance in order to continue that. And then, obviously, the deliver services or programs of being courtesy and professionalism, and I would really give out a big shout-out to the folks in the tax office and assessing because they do do one-on-one contact with many, many people and the citizens in in our water and sewer billing as well. So, in the accounting department, we have 11 full-time and one part-time. And just a photo of the team up there on the back row is Andrew, and then we have Helen, Deb, Terry, and Abby, and then in the front row, myself, Tina, and Denise, and Nancy. And this is where we do a lot of our core group, core processes here. We have, we do payroll for both the city and the school side, and we do payroll from start to finish. This is our accounts payable, our accounts receivable, our record management, our procurement process, and bond issuance, tax rate setting, so it goes on and on. And although we do a lot of these functions and each individual has their primary responsibility, what is the most important is the cross-training and the internal controls within the finance department, so we take that very serious. The photo on the right is Nancy and Judy Renaud and Maria, and they are very active in the, like, 100-plus water sewer bills that go out per year, and they work very closely with the citizens if there's a need, a payment arrangement, or any kind of services that we can help them as well. So, the accounting department does a lot with our publications. As you know, we're big members of the GFOA, and one of the reasons why we do that is because GFOA does really support and provide best practices. You open up this budget document, which is full of information. You're not going to find this same document in the surrounding areas. It is packed full, very comprehensive, it shows a lot of statistics, it shows a lot of trending, so we take pride in that document. And we provide transparency with all the statistical information and trending analysis. Now, this finance department, we only have four staff that have degrees in accounting. They play, the staff is very, they take a lot of pride in the information they do, but we only have four actual members who have degrees in accounting. We have a lot of members who have master's degrees, so we're very adept in that area. The assessing department is 17 member. We have Roseanne, Karen, Taryn, Lisa, Scott, Chuck, and Joe. They are very busy maintaining the nearly 9,000 properties within the city of Portsmouth, and their primary responsibility is to ensure fair and equitable assessments. So, many of us are familiar with them. You might see them out visiting sites, or we have many people that come into the department that are assisted by the folks here. Our revenue and tax collection is a five-team member. We have Kathy, Ed. Caitlin is our newest member, so she's in training right now, and then Nancy and Amy. And their primary responsibility is the collection of taxes, motor vehicle registrations. Motor vehicles takes in, is our second-to-the-highest revenue source outside of property taxes, estimating to be a little bit over $5 million this year. We see fluctuations. Sometimes the number of motor vehicle registrations go down a little bit, sometimes they go up, but it is constant. And then initiatives, as you know, you all have supported the paperless billing, which I wanted to share some good news here, and this is part of sustainability. It's going to save us money in the long term for postage and supplies, but we are up to 981 enrollments for paperless for water and sewer billing, so we're at about 11% of our customers there, which we're real happy about. And we have 301 property taxpayers for their property taxes signed up, a little over 3%, but we really feel strongly that that's going to continue to grow. We do, we're doing more promotion on online conveniences, the bill payment, motor vehicle registrations, and one of the initiatives that we're working on, actually, right now with Invoice Cloud, is to allow motor vehicle registrations by just being able to key in your plate number and the last four digits of your VIN number, and then UP will populate your registration. Currently, we mail out renewal notices as a courtesy, and those renewal notices have like a little code, so someone can go in and put in the code. And so, we're working towards going around that to eliminate that, the more mailing and the cost associated with mailing. We do have online donation buttons, which has been very helpful for folks trying to do donations. And then, we have really increased the number of interactive documents with our ACFA and our PAFRA and the annual budget document and the CIP, so you can go in on the online versions and kind of hop around from different areas, a lot of links to additional support information for the items that are in those documents. What we see in the upcoming FY '24 budget is I am requesting a new deputy finance director, not to replace Andrew, but to add to the team. This is real important for succession planning. We will probably have some turnover coming up. We're relatively around the same age in the finance department, and I think it's real important to start training. We started this process a year or so ago by adding another accountant onboard, but, you know, everything that impacts the city and all the initiatives that happen within the city, any acquisitions and whatnot, it does go through the finance department. So, we are busier than ever, and I think it's real important to, you know, get somebody else in and start learning some of the processes that we have here and continue that. So, that's the main initiative, and then other increases were the cost of the independent audit services that we're going, moving forward with, and then other actuarial studies. And Gatsby always has new pronouncements and accounting practices that we need to implement, so we consult with outside services to assist in those areas. So, that concludes the impact and the initiatives for finance, and I'll take any questions that you may have.
Judy?
Yes.
Councilor Burdick.
Thank you, Mayor. You're getting new financial software. That, when, what is the schedule of that?
Oh, so, as Pat was referring to, is the new financial software, but it's going to take a long time to even initiate the RFP process, you know, where we need to put in kind of a request for information so that we build the RFP properly, and then there's the whole RFP process, and then there's going out and looking at the softwares themselves before making determination. And then there's the whole establishment of a new account structure. Andrew Pergo and I actually went through this process back in 1999 in building, you know, doing this whole process, and it does take two to three years to actually roll out the whole system.
And to follow up that, then, will the, you have basically no training budget at this time in your budget for accounting?
Well, for the new ERP system, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, well, yeah, I understand that, but will some of that training be wrapped up into the purchase price of the software?
There, yes, there is a training component with software when you purchase something of that nature, but we'll also be utilizing the IT department to help train. What we did last time is that we, and this person is still with us, Cindy Chase, was hired when we implemented the current system, and she was there from like ground zero and documented it and went through all the training, and so we had somebody in-house also that was able to know the system, but also when we have new employees come in, be able to sit with them and do that immediate training that's needed. So, but there is a component, and we'll make sure there's a component of training within the RFP.
So, that's future.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to take this moment, you know, preparing for the budget, I look at communities of a similar size, and I look at communities that are geographically close to Portsmouth, and the 750-page budget book you guys put together, the popular annual report, it, we do a really, or you guys do a really outstanding job of the how and the why and the presentation of the budgets, and make it easy for somebody like myself, who's not a, you know, a financial analyst, to understand all the details. So, I just wanted to compliment the department on a very transparent and relatively easy-to-read set of documents regarding the budget.
Thank you.
Councilor Cook, Assistant Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you so much, Judy, for your presentation. I just wanted to add to what Councilor Bagley said. My father's a city councillor, as many of you know, and he just finished his, he's term-limited, he just finished his second and final term. And one of the things that he's done is he took a copy of my budget book because it's so impressive, and is trying to help his municipality, which is a municipality the same size as Portsmouth, 22,000 people, to create a budget that even approximates what you're doing. Because in many municipalities this size, the most that they get is a spreadsheet, and that's basically an Excel spreadsheet and a presentation on PowerPoint. So, he was incredibly impressed, and I am incredibly impressed, so thank you for this hard work.
Thank you. I just have a very simple question. Books and periodicals, I was just, could you explain to me what that was? Because I saw in the assessing department, the budget had doubled over the last...
A lot of those are certain subscriptions that are necessary in order to do the lookup and the information, especially on the business side. I know we had, Roseanne is implementing a new software, but it's a subscription, so it's in books and periodicals.
Easy peasy, thank you.
Councilor Morell.
Could you just give us an idea about how long we might actually realize savings from moving to this online billing that we're trying to move to?
Oh, for the paperless? So, I didn't bring my, from the presentation, I mean, we're looking at kind of a substantial savings, especially if we're hitting out about 108 water sewer bills, 108,000 water sewer bills per year. I think the savings was, if I can recall, like around 50 cents or 53 cents per bill.
Yeah, what's, I'm thinking more how long till we actually realize the timing.
Yeah, yeah, so, you know, we're at 11%, we just started advertising that for water, so we're going to see more water sewer customers because property taxes is only twice a year that people think about that. But we originally estimated about 35%, but it's probably going to take, you know, maybe six months to really get, we've only been doing this really for a few weeks, and we're up to 11% on water and sewer, so we're hoping, it's really hard to predict, but we've had a lot of inquiries on it before even rolling it out, so, yeah, so we figure we're going to see some movement on that.
Councilor Buck, Assistant Mayor.
Thank you, Your Honor, and thank you, Judy. I just noticed under goal number four, a number of policies reviewed and updated went from one to two to over 18.
Yeah, right, so we have a number of policies, we always have a number of policies and internal controls in place, and we're actually looking at new software currently with the legal department to help update and maintain policies. But we've been really looking at just maintaining them and reviewing them on an annual basis and seeing what we need. So, we're doing, being a little bit more proactive this year to move those, to move those along, but they're not new policies, so to speak, they're just more looking at some of the old ones, some of them are dated back from when I started, so just want to update them.
Judy, just a quick question. Do you happen to know the percentage of people with water and sewer that are on auto-pay?
Oh, gosh, I can't get that number.
I was thinking that's probably a good earmarker to how new people are going to...
Right, I think it's, if I remember correctly, and I can get a better number for the 20-second, I think it's like around 30% because it's just automatic payment. So, and some people really like that convenience, and some, you know, don't want a draw on their account without them controlling that. I think we're going to have a higher percentage of paperless as opposed to automatic payments.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, Judy, the whole finance team.
We had a break, we're not having another break, I'm moving along from that. We now have Planning and Sustainability Director, Peter Brits.
Hello, City Councilor, who's Mayor, City Manager. Well, I know all of you, and you know I've been here, I don't know if you all know, I've been here 22 years, but I've been here 22 years and only about five months as Director of Planning and Sustainability, so I'm going to go over what the department does and give you an updated budget. So, planning and sustainability. In support of the city's eco-municipality status, and due to recent efforts in climate planning, the planning department has evolved into Department of Planning and Sustainability. As part of memorializing this change, the department has grown with the addition of one full-staffed time person to support these efforts. Totally in the department, we have nine full-time staff people and two part-time staff members. This expansion supports the city council goal to proactively pursue the integration of sustainability, resilience, and climate change mitigation actions throughout the government and community. Most current and relevant to this goal is the kickoff of the city's Climate Action Plan, which had a well-attended community workshop on May 4th and continues to work on, work on those efforts. And I just want to mention, too, that you, I was surprised and impressed, maybe not surprised, impressed to see the other departments when I have been in the room today, that they all have sustainability initiatives. And you look at the cover of the budget book, we really focus on sustainability, and to me, it's really impressive that the community has taken it on and embraced it as it, as kind of the eco-municipality model suggests, that it's more of a systems approach. So, it's not the sustainability group saying everybody has to do these things, it's people making, taking the initiative in their departments, and I think the city's been doing a good job with that. Sure, it started slowly, but I think we've integrated it real well over the years, so I think it's appropriate that we have the department to focus on it, but we've really taken it on as a municipality. So, the core functions of the Planning and Sustainability Department, the planning department historically focused on regulatory services, which it still does. The regulatory actions of the city are codified through the city's zoning ordinance, site plan review regulations, and subdivision regulations. These ordinances are based on master planning efforts coordinated by the department and implemented by our regulatory boards with the help of staff. The boards we support include the Planning Board, the Board of Adjustment, the Historic District Commission, the Conservation Commission, the Sustainability Committee, and the Portsmouth Energy Advisory Committee. Some of the long-range planning documents the department has developed to support the regulatory work it conducts include Portsmouth Master Plan, the Openspace Plan, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan, the Coaster Resilience Initiative, the Historic Properties Climate Change Vulnerability Assessment, and the Public undeveloped Lands Assessment. Another focus more recently that the department's been focusing on is to enhance the city council goal of diversity and enhance the supply of housing choices, we've received a grant and hired a housing navigator. Housing Navigator Howard Snyder, brought him over today, and he's here to answer questions if any come up about housing and what we're working on. He'll be with the city through the fall of 2024, and is working on efforts to expand the stock and affordability of the city's housing. Through regulatory changes and incentives in the zoning ordinance, along with education and outreach efforts, the work of the housing navigator will strengthen the ability of the city to provide a diverse housing stock with a particular focus on workforce housing. And that's about all I have for you, but if there's questions for me or for Howard, I'm happy to answer them.
Seeing any questions? Oh, Councilor Bagley?
Thank you, Your Honor. I do see the additional staff position in the planning department, and I understand, or at least I think I understand, that has a lot to do with sustainability. However, I am looking for places where we can reduce the budget. How much would it affect your department if we were to delay this position by a year?
Well, as I mentioned, the position was, has a person in it as a contract or temporary position, and the amount of work that that person has taken on is quite extensive, so it would be a huge blow to not continue that work that way. We'd have to do quite a bit of reorganizing to figure that out. There's a lot of regulatory work going on, we have a planner, too, that we hired basically to fill in for all the regulatory work, and they will take on some of the sustainability work as well. So, part of it is also, as I'm new in the position, is shifting some of that work in the department. But really, the idea of the environmental planner being a standing position is that there's a lot of focus on environmental protection in our ordinances, but also a lot of environmental protection work that isn't going to get completed without city staff, like our, all of our open spaces and lands need to be looked at on a more regular basis and inventoried and tracked. That public undeveloped lands assessment study needs to be revisited, the wetlands ordinance need to be revisited. This staff person has received two grants already, one for $20,000, and we're hoping for another one at $10,000. Sorry, she's received one grant already, but, and then been instrumental in working on the Climate Action Plan and getting the word out to the public, and also supporting the Conservation Commission through, to the Planning Board process. So, there's a lot of work embedded already in that. It would be a lot of refocusing and shifting, I guess, is the easiest way to answer your question.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Councilor Morell.
Can you, do you see, when we were talking to IT earlier, and they talked about all of these possible new systems that we could, I know that your department is very heavy in paper, and sometimes that's just because these are huge and they're really hard to see if they're not in paper, but do you see a way to sort of streamline some of the processes of your department to try to save money overall if we can become more automated?
Well, I have to say that the online building permit, OpenGov, that we use, has really done a lot to reduce the amount of paper. All the boards have gone to an iPad, so we don't have every board member getting a packet, we just have the one packet for the file. We are looking at whether we need even a paper copy, but I think for at least the time we can see in the future, we're going to need to have one paper copy. Yeah, it's something we're looking at, there's a lot of processes that overlap, people have to go to several boards, and it's challenging, but we're really implementing what's in our zoning ordinance and what's in state law that we have to, so where we can, we'll look for those opportunities, but I haven't, I don't see any ones, other than that big one in terms of shifting away from paper into the iPad right on the immediate horizon.
Thanks.
Thank you, Your Honor. To follow up on Councilor Bagley's question, how much of the current contractor's position was your former role before you went on to become the Planning and Sustainability Director?
Well, the role of supporting the Conservation Commission, the role of doing sustainability work, the role of writing grants and working on open space, but my job has always been, you know, there's also a lot of support for city projects, so helping with wetland permit writing and the liaison with the regulatory bodies at the state that deal with environmental issues, and then, so my position as environmental planner and sustainability coordinator kind of evolved through the years, and it's kind of difficult to, at any one time, to say what percentage, but I would say her job is completely focused on that position, it just doesn't cover all of it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, Peter.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Peter. Up next, we have Sean Clancy talking about economic and community development.
Morning, councilors, Assistant Mayor, Mayor. Some of you may have noticed that the Office of Economic Development now includes community development, and it's going to be a separate department for FY '24. be a separate department for FY '24. And what we've noticed is our businesses really benefit from the overall health of our community, including our nonprofits and arts and culture and all the things that we don't, we don't think of in terms of commercial activity. And we really look forward to leveraging the existing potential connections between economic development and community development going forward. I'd like to share with you the top three goals of our department. So the first goal, some of you have heard about the Customer Relationship Management Database tool that we've added to our toolbox here, and with the support of the EDC and the IT Department, our goal is to really stand this up to better communicate and engage with our economic stakeholders. That really is an opportunity to increase two-way communication and, in the word of the day, increase some efficiency on how our office communicates and engages with our, with our business community. That really ties into business retention and commercial growth, as well as consistent communication that you all are looking for us to do. The second goal is to engage the business community in advocating for equality of place. And it's great that I followed Peter because just, just so much going on here in terms of our investment in ourselves as a city. And that's, in my opinion, an easy conversation to have with a business. Wouldn't you want to invest in your business in a city or municipality that invests in itself? So this is an opportunity to really engage businesses. They have a voice. We want them to use their voice, whether it's participating in our Climate Action Plan. We have a cultural plan that we've put an RFP out for. We're certainly going to have the Master Plan, and we want to have those voices contributing. And again, that can tie into your City Council goals, number two and 12. So the last one is expanding community development, sorry, there we go.
Sorry, I didn't catch up to you.
We want to look to expand our community develop funding sources. So currently, we really work on the CDBG, right? It's this number of the funds we get from the feds, and there are opportunities to look at other areas, other funding sources, both within that, I'll say, channel and others. Things like the Community Development Finance Authority has put out some opportunity in the area of commercial, in developing community development space. So, and there's also one I heard about on Friday, so it's not fully baked, but there's some sustainability channels within, within the CDBG budget. So really just investigating those, as we've heard, they're important not only to citizens and to, but really to our businesses and everyone else who lives and works here. So those are the opportunities to be a little better fleshed out as we go through FY '24, but that's what I wanted to share with you this morning.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I have one on the CRM. How are we actively working to get folks into that database and making sure that their contact information is updated and correct?
So that is a challenge. I need to find the time to do that. The way we populate it, Mayor, is with a Google scrape. So I'm working, I'm working with a vendor who created a CRM specifically for economic development organizations. That's the good news. So they already speak our language. The second thing is, it is in pilot mode, so I'm able to ask for things as opposed to get an off-the-shelf product. So, but what I think I'm going to be looking at is internships and finding ways to get, at the end of the day, we're going to need some arms and legs on the ground to be able to clean the data.
So one of the thoughts that, that I have is, you know, where are we, where do they have to go already in terms of like, you know, maybe it's viewpoint, in terms of getting, you know, the latest, the emails that go out, you know, from a, restaurants somewhat easy because they have inspection departments, but making sure that we understand, you know, where those, where businesses have to do business with the city of Portsmouth to be able to leverage that communication channel to be able to alert them or poll them or things like that.
Right. So just to illustrate that, for our Market Street and Commercial Alley effort, it was walking door to door and handing out flyers and asking to send an email to get you on our list so we could communicate to you with what was going on. This, to me, it's going to take some time, going in, you know, going out another year, but to have something that's robust where we can sort by industry, sort by location, target communication, even get to a point where we could launch our own surveys and not have to pay the UNH Survey Center, but just kind of have that ongoing conversation. That's the vision. We're certainly not there today, but we have a tool with which to move forward with.
Great. Councilor Tabor?
We're really lucky in that businesses want to move here, where they want to build headquarters downtown. It's enviable. But one of our biggest tax-based losses was Schiller Station when that closed, and that property's just sitting out there, waterfront property. Is that in your wheelhouse at all to try and come up with some outreach effort to reactivate that parcel of land?
Not necessarily, I haven't necessarily focused on that. I know that in conversations with, with Gino Marconi at the Ford of New Hampshire, there's been conversations about what could happen there, but it's really been informal.
We, to answer that question, right before Sean got here, Nancy Carmer and I met with the folks at Granite Shore Power, the folks who bought Schiller, and they made it clear that it would take a lot to bring that power, that plant back up to speed. It does serve a peak demand. They have no interest in sharing what they're planning. We even asked them if Peter Brits is still in the room, to carve out some of the land for conservation closer to Atlantic Heights. Not interested in that. So we will, now that Sean's here, and we haven't checked in in over a year and a half now, maybe two, it's, we're due for another check-in to see what they may be willing to share with us.
It used to be our single biggest taxpayer, I think, when it was active.
Great. Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Bagley?
Yeah, thanks, Your Honor. I guess I'll just comment, you know, the Market Square, not Market Square, Commercial Alley, Market Street, what you guys did with the outreach, the pre-planning meetings, the putting up the signs, having, in conjunction with Public Works, points of contacts with phone numbers and emails, I think is great. I do know, especially with commercial, you have, you know, landlords, and then you have owners, and then you have employees, managers, and it's very difficult, even if you go to door to door, to get the information to the right person, and it doesn't just get kind of thrown away. So by doing that extra step when there's construction activity or other disruption downtown, I think that's great, and I hope we see more of that in the future.
And I'll just say, DPW had two folks on the ground every day. I wasn't there every day, but I did my rotations and just was making sure we communicated. So I think it was a great team effort. Thank you.
Thanks.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Sean.
Next up, we have someone very familiar to all of you, City Clerk Kelly Barnaby.
Good morning. Okay. Thank you for the opportunity to present the City Clerk and Election Division budgets to you. This slide contains various professional organizations that I'm affiliated with, the New Hampshire City and Town Clerk Association, the New England Association of City and Town Clerks, the International Institute of Municipal Clerks, the New England Municipal Clerks Institute and Academy, and the Municipal Clerks Education Fund through the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. Slide two is our team. This includes myself, Valerie French, our Deputy City Clerk, who has been with us for over 20, yes, 20 years, and our newest hire, June Philbrook, our Fundamental responsibilities. This involves our issuance of vital records containing, measuring from birth, marriage, death, as well as divorce certificates now. We started doing those for any divorces that took place from 1979 and forward. It is a database through the State of New, the State of New Hampshire Division of Vital Records, and you can actually go to any city or town clerk's office in New Hampshire to get a certified copy of your vital record, as long as it's within the timeframe in which the state has the information into the database, which they uploaded more than, more than 1 million records in the last few years. We issue a wide variety of permit and licenses, anywhere from poll licenses to dog licenses to amusement licenses. It goes on and on. I always say, whatever the tax collector's office doesn't issue for licenses, we do. We support the City Council, the City Manager, and staff in a wide variety of areas. We provide the action sheet to all departments, and we outline the various actions that have taken place, and follow-up is required by them so that they're aware of that. We do a matrix now that has all the actions of the council so that we can make sure that we stay on top of anything that needs to be reported back. We work directly with the City Manager's office on that. We update the local boards and commissions and New Hampshire's state and governmental leaderships. We file and safeguard all city documents. Records and preservation of vital records and city documents for the historical continuity for the future of Portsmouth. And one example, which I don't have in this slide, but I do want to speak to, is we have the Portsmouth incorporation papers, and it is a fascinating document that was signed by Governor Samuel Dinsmore and Secretary of State Thomas Treadwell from July 6 of 1849. It is an amazing document, and we find it very fascinating to look at. We assist in preparing bond packages for the Finance Department. We do the part that's required for council minutes, information about the charter, information about any rules and procedures that have changed for the council. We certify all the resolutions that pass, so on and so forth. And we just did a major package for Judy's department. Those do take some time. They are very comprehensive, but we work well together and we provide that information. Voter registration, which is a huge part of our department, we do all voter registration for those wishing to register to vote in the community, change their voter registration address and/or name or their party affiliation. We maintain voter history for all those that have voted in an election, and we provide that information to the state, which is in a database that they collect statistical information for reporting federal requirements to the government. We administer state, local, and federal elections. That is a main, one of the main components of our office. That is by no means an easy undertaking. It is a great deal of work. We continue to advance trying to get more people interested in voting and increase our voter participation. Some of our initiatives and accomplishments, we administered the 2022 midterm elections, which there were September primary and November election. We reestablished Student Government Day, which was wonderful. The students really enjoyed their time with us, and they said that they look forward to next year. And that was in conjunction with Council Blaylock and City Manager, as well as Assistant Mayor Kelly was trying to get us to bring that back as well. She was very interested in that. And we look forward to doing that again next year and perhaps expanding on some of that. We continue historical records preservation in partnership with CO File. So every year when you put money into the CIP budget, we use that, that funding to preserve more books within the city and to make them more accessible and available to the public. Some initiatives is to create an election brochure and integrate polling books throughout all five city wards. The e-polling books is an electronic device which streamlines the check-in process. This means shorter wait times and ultimately increased voter turnout. Poll books record totals with no counting of tallying voters per sheet on a paper list any longer, and it will provide check-in totals through the electronic process. Initially, the letter system for checking in would be eliminated to allow voters to check in at any station, no matter where their name falls in the alphabet. This will be a huge undertaking. We will work directly with LHS and Associates. We're not completely sure if this will go across the city in all five wards. At first, we may have to initially select a ward that we piloted through, but we are looking to do that. You are required in the state of New Hampshire to still have your paper checklist in the back to maintain that process in order for us, if for some reason the machine was to go down, we have the paper checklist to go back to. This has been deployed to 22 communities throughout the state so far, and it has been very vital to them in their reporting, and they find it very useful, and they feel that it has helped with voter turnout. The next item for an initiative is to augment and host voter registration drives to engage voters. So we're looking to maybe come here to the library and host a drive, perhaps to community campus, and a citywide neighborhood meeting, and perhaps join the City Manager at Farmer's Market one weekend before the municipal election or the presidential primary for getting some people to register to vote. We organize and exhibit for historical records promoting our preservation program. So I'd like to host an exhibit where we would provide access to the community to view some of our historical records from the vault, because we have taken such time and work to get them preserved, and they really are beautiful books. This will further promote the preservation project and allow residents to see the importance of this program, which has been an ongoing project through the capital improvement program. And of course, the big item of the year is conducting the municipal election for 2023. Information will be coming out soon as to the filing period and some other information that we're going to be doing. We're going to be establishing a QR code to help with getting some of the information out to people. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you for your time. Are there any questions?
Kelly? Any questions? Councilor Bowe?
Thank you, Your Honor. And thank you, Kelly. And I just want to really want to thank you for all your help on that Student Government Day. You were an integral part of that, and I couldn't have done it without your help.
Thank you. It was a lot of fun.
That's it, Kelly. Thank you so much for all the work you, Valerie, and June do on behalf of the city. It's very much appreciated.
Thank you very much.
Keeping with the Kelly theme, we now have Kelly Harper, Human Resources Director. Good morning.
Good morning. Happy to be here today to present to you the FY '24 HR presentation. On this slide, you will see just some of the 307 employees we hired in 2022 and a few in 2023. Our team is made up of four members, and between the four of us, we support 1,525 employees. Our support includes staffing and employee relations, performance and cultural improvements, compliance management, negotiations, benefits administration, recruitment, training, and risk management. HR can be considered as the heart of any organization as the primary employee-centric needs are taken care of by the department. We are, in most cases, the first faces or contact welcoming staff, and our focus is always ensuring the well-being of staff and being a structured engine that keeps things running smoothly on a daily basis. We are also one of the departments that supports both the school and municipal side of the city. Tying in with the organizational goals of financial stability and with the support and approval by the council, this past year, we were able to finalize 10 collective bargaining agreements, giving us the capability to hire at higher wages than entry level, adding Juneteenth as a paid holiday, removing gender-specific language, adding in a lower-cost insurance plan to some, and consistency to the longevity amounts. Also, with council support and approval, we Also with council support and approval, we were able to adjust wages by 4% for all staff, allowing us to attract talent and retain employees. In fiscal year 22, we saw the Great Resignation hit this municipality with an all-time high of a 22% turnover rate. We have been able to reverse that trajectory and return to our normal turnover rate estimated this fiscal year at around 9% to 10%. Even having employees return to working for us after adjusting the wages. As we continue to hit walls around recruitment, we are engaging in job fairs as often as possible, promoting open positions on social media and more diverse platforms like Seacoast Outright. Our health benefits also help us attract talent and we have been lucky with the percentages of our increases for our health insurance. Health trust members saw anywhere from a negative 4% to a 20% increase this year, while our guaranteed rates came in for both school care and health trusts at only 3.5%. We will continue to help educate employees on wellness and all the benefits that are available to them. One noteworthy improvement this past year, after our recommendation by Councilor Denton, is that we have put into place an annual employee development check-in, allowing employees and their supervisors to discuss and implement goals for the coming year and the ability to review metrics in the areas of teamwork, communication, leadership, task management, customer service and job knowledge. This has helped with the retention of staff, allowing some to even be promoted after. In FY24, with help from our IT department, we will be implementing software for policy compliance and training, as well as an intranet for staff through SharePoint. Our hope is that this will allow for better communication throughout the organization. Thank you for all your support this past year and I'm happy to take any questions.
Kelly, Councilor Bagley.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. And thank you, Kelly. This may be a school board question, but I see in FY21, we had for substitute, I assume substitute teachers, 33 applications processed. Last year was 241 and we're projecting 217, which I'm very happy to see because I know finding substitutes has been a big issue since COVID. Do you know relative to pre-COVID numbers, if that 200 number is typical or can you speak to that at all, where we are with substitute teachers?
I believe that number is typical.
So we're more or less returning to?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Councilor Denton.
Kelly, thank you for following up and implementing the employee check-in. My question is actually regarding the picture on the right. What is the trophy that's being held?
We held a food drive throughout the city and the legal department actually won the food drive. All of the food was donated together and it was weighed by the recreation department. And so the legal department got really serious about it and went to VJs and bought the heaviest items that they could find so that they could win. And that is the trophy being presented to Susan.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
Always finding those legal loopholes.
Any other questions? Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
Thanks very much, Kelly. Next up is our Health Director and Officer, Kim McNamara.
Good morning, Mayor, Assistant Mayor and Council. So we are a four-person health department now. There's myself, the Director and Health Officer for the city. Kristen Shaw is our Deputy Health Officer. Tony McClellan's our Health Inspector several years now. And our newest addition is Cameron on the far left here in the photo, and he is our brand-new Health Inspector. The Portsmouth Health Department is an environmental health department, which is the branch of public health that focuses on the relationship between people and their environment, promotes health and well-being and focuses healthy and safe communities. As such, we do not offer clinical services unless it's in times of a declared public health emergency, and then we work under the auspices of several state and federal partners. Our public and environmental health focus areas are listed here. I won't go through every one of them, but protect, maintain and restore a healthy environment is what we are charged to do under state law. We also mitigate heavy medical, chemical and biological contaminants, and so we do a lot of work on things like safe water and the PFAS issue and other environmental contamination issues. Safe, nutritious, affordable food is a big one for us and that explains our food service regulatory program for licensing and inspecting restaurants. And really, this one sums up what we do mostly. Safe places to live, learn, work and play. That's a human right and that is what we focus on. There's a lot of public health planning that we do because we are trying to prepare our community for a changing world and there's a lot of roles that the Health Department also plays in emergency management functions. And for input and engagement, one of the things that we are working to bring to the city is a health-in-all policies approach. And health-in-all policies, it's a collaborative approach that integrates and articulates health considerations into policymaking over various sectors to improve the health for all, and that's what's really important. We're trying to level the playing field for all members of the city of Portsmouth and the people who work here and the kids who come to school here. And the symbols along the bottom, which you're all very familiar with by now, you know, these five areas sort of promote all of the goals that are symbolized here. And this is just a fun fact, so every year we see this number go up. These are self-reported seating numbers. The population at the 2021 census of Portsmouth was 21,897. Our food service seating has now grown to 35,644 seats total as of May 2023. So just a few days ago, we compiled this from the latest applicants. These are self-reported seating numbers. This is what people are applying for to have for seating indoor, outdoor, some under liquor license, some not under liquor license, and that's what these other graphs show. But overall, you can see the historical permit data. We have 298 permits. It dropped a bit twice. One was for a change in definition of who needed to be permitted and then, of course, COVID took a dip for some of our restaurants. But out of those 300 establishments, you have all of these seats. And keep in mind that these seats turn over repeatedly during open shifts. There are large venues that may only serve snacks and those sort of things and drinks, and drinks are food, but like the Music Hall, which has lots of seats. But we also have a lot of very small permittees that have just a few seats. So Portsmouth is not slowing down when it comes to food service. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Not a question, but I just wanted to thank you. I think unfortunately, historically, your department has sometimes gotten a bad rap in the restaurant industry, but I can personally say that the three of you that I know, and I just met Cameron, actually at the Farmer's Market, work so diligently to make sure and ensure that we are safe, the restaurant owners and staff members are up to date and educated on food safety and all of that, and also that you do much more, that you do, it's not just restaurants. You're in the school department. Every time there is an event in a park or a fundraiser or things outside, you guys go really above and beyond. And so I just want to thank you personally and I think for most of the city that doesn't understand that you are just not popping in and out of restaurants, that you're doing much more than that.
Thank you very much.
Councilor Denton.
I guess more of a FYI for you. One thing I'm going to try to do is find funding or add funding to reimburse some of the farmers at the market who use reusable containers. I know it sounds kind of silly, but parking spaces there cost $20 if you're not parking your vehicle, $25, so some farmers are spending $50 just on that. And when I was speaking, you spent $1,300 this season on glass jars and I think it's something that we could find funding for. And I know that you play a role at the Farmer's Market, so again, just a FYI.
Thank you. We are also looking at that effort, so I appreciate that.
Thank you very much, Kim.
Thanks, Kim. Next up, we have Welfare Administrator Ellen Tully. Why is that so hard for me to say? Come on up, Ellen.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm the Welfare Officer here in Portsmouth. We're a one-and-a-half-person office. What you see before you is basically our mission statement. Gone, one, two, yeah. And we're here basically because of RSA 165, which has been on the books in the state of New Hampshire for about 250 years. And we are here to basically, glasses or not glasses, sorry, to basically address the poor and unable who are to support themselves in the city and every city, town and village in New Hampshire has a welfare officer. And those who are poor and able to maintain themselves shall be relieved and maintained by the town. We're here to assist folks with possibly paying for their shelter, food, medication, utilities, any emergency need that comes up that we are able to basically figure out a way to pay for it. We have this very stringent regulation that we are mandated to go by and we're also, you know, trying to treat all of our clients with courtesy and be as efficient as possible when we assist. We want to do everything in a timely manner. At the same time, we're working closely with all other agencies available, whether they're federal, state or local agencies. At all times, we're trying to, as I like to say, spend other people's money first. If there's a federal program that somebody can utilize, we require them to access that first before we use taxpayer money. And we serve Portsmouth residents only. As I said, every town and city has their own welfare officer, so we're, you know, focused directly on Portsmouth and what's available to Portsmouth residents. We're always leveraging the money every day with every client and the other, we also maintain the outside social service grants, which I review with the city manager. And here they are, the ones that we are currently assisting. We're looking at these as a whole and this year, one of the things that we talked about was whether or not an agency is available to help reduce the pressure of housing for people, if they can work with an agency, Krempel's or Seacoast Pathways, if that agency helps them in any way to maintain their housing, we're very happy to look at that, given the housing crisis that we're experiencing here in Portsmouth.
Thank you, Your Honor. Any questions? Councilor Bagley.
Thanks, Your Honor. And I noticed that for the last few years, because of COVID, the shelter has come in way less expensive than we expected.
Right. Typically, in pre-COVID, and this is across the board in the entire state, our biggest line item has always been shelter and emergency shelter. But because the federal government had this emergency rental assistance program that was widely used, the shelter expenses, you know, dropped to a miniscule number compared to what we've spent in the past. But that money is gone. It's all been utilized locally.
And last year, I think we were expecting kind of a tsunami, but then the state stepped in in the fall.
Right.
So, but this year, it's back on us.
Yeah, what happened was that the money was going to run out December 31st and because it was right in the middle of winter, agencies and people across the state were like, you can't do this right now. You know, it just was not even a humane thing to do. So they were able to come up with $20 million more dollars, which lasted, single people were able to maintain, be maintained in their housing, which typically was motels until April 15th, and June 15th is the cutoff day for families.
So I guess we expect it to kind of resume to non-pre-COVID levels.
We do. Yeah, we absolutely do.
Okay, thank you.
Do you expect that to go more than pre-COVID levels because of the folks that were in the rental?
It's hard to say. We work very hard these days, harder than we ever have to keeping people in their places because once you're evicted, the chances of finding another place are minuscule and with the vacancy rate around here at .25, there's just no place to get into. So we're working very hard to keep people in there and that might cost a little bit more money because we're working harder with them to keep them in there and because the rents have gone up exorbitantly.
Thank you, Your Honor.
And thank you too for your presentation today. So as we're seeing shifting climate, right now, we get, we fund warming centers, we assist with warming centers. Do we have plans for addressing cooling centers and ways that we can get additional funding for cooling centers?
Not to the best of my knowledge. You know, we do the cooling here at the library and various other places when we expect really hot water, but as hot water, hot weather. As far as a place to stay overnight, that doesn't exist and I, and it's, my experience is that it's not on the table, you know, because we're so focused on winter shelter that is really truly much more deadly.
Seeing no other questions? Thanks so much, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Ellen, thanks a million. We're up next with Inspection Director Shanti Wolf.
Thanks, Ellen.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Assistant Mayor, Councilors. So I feel like in the last probably year and a half, the inspections Department has gone through a lot of change, ups and downs. When I walked in, there was a little bit of turmoil occurring and we hired some new folks on and, you know, some of our staff left and we pretty much leveled off at this point, so I feel good where we're at and we can get down to business. We have three building inspectors, myself, Tim Mativier, Paul Garand. We have two plumbing and mechanical inspectors, which is Dana Choby and Kevin Gagny. We have our single electrical inspector, he's in the room today, which is John Ploard. And then we have our two permit clerks, Mary Lou and Luciana. So a really good team up there. Really happy, like I say, where we're at right now. Next slide. So a lot of directions we could have gone today with the, with our budget and kind of what we do, but I stuck with a single slide and some of our core functions. We get our hands into a lot of different avenues across the city, different departments, but I think primarily is our permit review. So, you know, whether it's a small deck or a 90,000-square-foot, four-story, commercial mixed-use building, you know, it all starts in our department or probably starts before our department, but it ends in our department before the permit is issued. Our goal, whether it's the deck or it's the big building, is to ensure that structures comply with the minimum, minimum construction standards and that they're safe to occupy not just today, but in the, in the many years to come. Last year, to that point, we issued 5,076 permits. We did 10,848 inspections and we brought in $1.49 million in permit revenue. Actually, that was within the last 365 days, so a year ago today, not actually calendar year or fiscal year. And our education, very important that all of our inspectors continue to stay educated with new codes, new legislation that would affect the city and that would affect the way that the business is done in the construction industry, tools, techniques, materials, always evolving. We have also put on, we did six trainings this year that we invited the public to that took place in the council chambers. A fairly good turnout from the public, but we hope to have a lot more in the future. We actually like to have at least one training a month. Like you say, we had six this year. All of our inspectors, monthly, will go to training, sometimes more than monthly, sometimes two or three, including webinars. Training, code compliance, certifications, appropriate staffing, all of those factors contribute towards a lower insurance services office score, which is an ISO score, which is important because that'll help residents and commercial and residential get a lower homeowners insurance rate. The score goes The score goes from one to 10, one being the best score. Six years ago, we had a four for both residential and commercial. So what we do with our standards statewide and locally, making sure that our inspectors are certified, educated, very important when it comes to, you know, trickles down to the homeowners insurance. So something that not a lot of people consider. And the collaboration, of course, really important. We wouldn't be able to do our job if we weren't collaborating with all the different departments across the city. We meet every Wednesday morning with fire, zoning, facilities, and planning to discuss ongoing projects, past projects, future projects. We also work regularly with legal, assessing, and health. We collaborated with Public Works on the FOG program, which is fats, oils, and grease for restaurants, which is the, basically a grease trap or interceptor, which you have to have in place to protect the water treatment facility. We worked with the health department to bring up-to-date the online restaurant food service construction guide. There's a lot of plumbing and mechanical codes that go along with that guide. Constant cross-departmental communication and collaboration is crucial to streamlining the speed and also the quality of which a project is reviewed and approved. Code enforcement, life safety inspections, and other aspects of what our department provides, rental and multifamily rental housing inspections. Presently, we perform these on a complaint basis. This service is critical for safeguarding our rental demographic from substandard living conditions, which, believe it or not, we find quite a bit, quite a bit of. You know, so it's, it's good that this program is in place and it's good that these folks have someone they can call and that we can, we can respond and get out there and work with the landlords to get these, these issues corrected. We also responded to various complaints from residents of excessive noise, working without a permit, working after hours in the weekend, et cetera. Another thing is annual hotel and business inspections we perform with the fire department. These inspections are designed to keep workers and patrons safe when visiting the city. There are tons of other tasks and responsibilities not mentioned that occur on a daily and weekly basis. But in a nutshell, that's, that's why we're here. That's what we do. Any questions?
Thanks, Shanti. Counselor Lombardi?
Yes, I don't have a question, but I have a couple of comments. One first is, I live on a street that has a lot of construction going on right now. And so I had the opportunity to talk to several contractors. They're very happy to be coming back to Portsmouth. They would not work in Portsmouth a few years ago, or a year ago. The inspection department has really improved their communication and the, the willingness to work with contractors and not come in and just say, no, this isn't good, and then leave. They, they work with the contractors and help create a situation that they can inspect and improve. Secondly, I had a plumbing inspector come to my house. And he came just days after his house burned down. And he lost three dogs. But all, all the people were safe, but he lost three dogs. And it, you know, I, when he told me that, you know, I was brought to tears. It was, this, this man is very dedicated and got back to work and has a tough time forward. So just appreciate that staff there. Thank you.
Counselor Bagley?
Thank you, Your Honor. And I'll just back up with Counsel Lombardi said. When this council took office, which is right around the time, I think, that you joined the team, I think the inspection department had, was probably the biggest source of frustration among the residents for two reasons. One, due to COVID, a lot of people did home renovation projects. So the demands ramped up very quickly. And two, there was a lot of ambiguity. I believe we cut one of the codebooks in half as a council, not as, that you brought to the council about six months ago. And I just want to say thank you for, you know, making the inspection department a lot easier to work with while maintaining the highest safety mission that you guys have.
Thank you. Counselor Tabor?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. I'm just looking at the number of inspections that went up from 7807 to 10,848 in one year. Thirty-eight percent increase. Is that kind of run rate that you see happening, that 10,000, 11,000 number? I mean, that's a huge jump.
Right. So there have been a lot more permits. I think that some of the projects, more detailed, in-depth projects would require more inspections. So the number of inspections is really a difficult one. You'd have to drill down and see exactly where those are coming from. But all in all, I, you know, construction is, is definitely up. It's increased. And I do feel that, that more contractors are wanting to work in Portsmouth, you know, now. But statewide as well, you know, I mean, just construction is up all around. You know, I think there's a lot of inspections. I think that's more than there, than there has been in the past. You know, so, yeah.
And I want to echo what everyone else has said. Having done a kitchen renovation, prompt, professional, great attention, it's just a total turnaround. So wonderful for that. And my only other question is, how are the triplets doing?
Triplets, right. Luciana, one of our permit clerks, had triplets dispatched here. And they're all doing amazingly well and no problems. Happy and healthy and, yeah, just, everything was perfect from, from beginning until now.
It's quite a scene when they come and visit, though. They are so cute.
Shanti, I'd like to echo the comments of the council. I would say that without a doubt, one of the things that we heard about most notably in the campaign, but issues, ten, people would talk a lot about inspections and the time to get inspections. And some of the decisions that you've made to allow the homeowner, instead of the contractor, to be there for some, you know, inspections really improved the process. The getting to yes, and I go back, although I don't have an outdoor rinse station, you know, when you looked at the code and saw that, you know, most people weren't looking to take showers, full-fledged showers outside, which would produce gray water, meaning water and, and soap and dirt. But just to rinse off and make sure that you could get to yes on that and using all the knowledge of all the inspectors, to get to yes is something that I think that, you know, people expect government to be reasonable and to be efficient. And you've really led with the example in the department of just getting to reasonable outcomes that also take into account safety. And I know that you're a member of the team, but, but by leading this team, I think you've set a really high bar. So I want to thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
I also, I'd like to take the moment to call out specifically John, who is here. John, would you mind standing up here? So we, and maybe come up to stand, Shanti. I don't know if everybody knows this, but we received a, a letter from the Danville Fire Department. And typically, we don't, you know, when we get an official letter from another city, it's usually that we're in trouble of some sort. But I'd just like to take this, this moment to read the letter that was addressed to Ms. Kelly Barnaby on April 25th. "On April 25th, 2023, at approximately 7:30 a.m., your electrical inspector, John Plord, was driving on Sandown Road in Danville, New Hampshire. He noticed smoke and flames coming out of a window at 272 Sandown Road. Mr. Plord stopped and assessed the situation and grabbed a garden hose from the front yard and began to spray water into the room where two couches were actively burning, as well as room contents. With no regard for his own safety, John extinguished a bulk of the fire and made sure all residents and pets were evacuated safely. I have been in fire service for 40 years, and I know had John not intervened when he did, the outcome would have been disastrous. Our members have to respond from home and get apparatus and then respond to emergency. And this incident was six to eight minutes from the station. This fire would have tripled and quadrupled in size. My hat is off to John and thank you again, Chief Stephen Whitcomb." So John, on behalf of myself and the city council, we just wanted to take this time to commend you on not only being an exceptional electronic, electrical inspector, but an overall great human being with a bias towards action, even when it comes to putting yourself in harm's way for residents that you might not have, have ever met. So thank you on being the example that we all strive to emulate here in the city of Portsmouth.
Thank you. And I, and I got to add, because John's, John's a very humble guy. He would never tell you. So it wasn't as simple as that. That was, that was a great letter. But the, the garden hose was in a shed that John had to find. And it was several lengths. We had to string them together. And after we got them together, he goes in and the door handle, burned his hand on the handle a little so hot, kicks the door in, gets in there, turns on the hose. There's no water. So then he's got to run around to the basement, find where the water shut-off is, because it was, it was closed for the winter time. So he turns on the spigot, runs back upstairs, starts fighting the fire. He's on his belly, fighting the fire. And the fire department saw these legs sticking out 15 feet into the room, thought he was dead, pulled him out, still fighting the fire. So that's, that's how the story goes. Thank you.
Thank you, Shanti. Thank you, John.
Our last speaker of the morning, before we take a break, and we're going on a field trip when we do take a break, and we have a, a big van taking us, is Library Director Christine Fries. And in the room with us is Assistant Director Laura Horwood Benton as well. Christine is attending to a family matter, so she's remote, but she should be on Zoom. Christine, are you there?
I am here. Can you hear me clearly?
We can, just a little quiet.
Okay. Let's see if we can increase that, or I'll speak up. All right. Thank you. Is that better?
Not really, but we'll, we'll stick with you.
All right. Let's try this. Okay. Thank you all, Mr. Mayor, Assistant Mayor Kelly and council, for allowing us first to host this meeting. I hope you're enjoying the exhibits. It's a lovely background for your meeting, I hope. We, as you know, are a dedicated team of full and part-time librarians, library assistants, pages, and our office manager, who strive to educate, engage, empower, and enrich our community of Portsmouth residents, businesses, tourists, and visitors from neighboring towns. We do that through strong collections, both physical and downloadable, including books, films, newspapers, magazines, literacy kits, and fun things to borrow. We do it through year-round programming for all ages, including storytimes that prepare children for reading, after-school programs that offer youth opportunities to create and to explore, programs for adults that bring speakers and discussions to the library around a variety of topics and programs, and exhibits for all ages to enjoy, where families can learn and enjoy the community members around them. The library in Portsmouth has very much become the community space and a space for civil discourse. We do all this in our circulation, youth services, and reference and special collections departments with the able support of our technical services department, programming and outreach librarian, and our office manager. In fiscal year 2022, we served 108,132 visitors. And this year so far, we have seen 128,352 and anticipate over 150,000 by the fiscal year end. This means we are approaching pre-COVID numbers. We also have 16,535 cardholders, which is 60-plus percent of residents. I have to say, I have to cull this out because in library school, we were told that the average is about 15% of residents who hold a library card. Not so in Portsmouth, and this has remained steady in the eight years that I've been here. Next slide, please. We like to say that we're here for every resident of any age. And you can come to us with questions, interests, and needs, or simply to come and be in community. You don't need to have a problem. You don't need to have money or not have money. We just enjoy having you visit. Our value to households can be measured in a number of ways. But I've given you a simple example that you can see on our website. We have a calculator that allows you to determine how much use you're making of the library and what the economic, what the economic price of those things are. So in the first single-person example that I gave here, this is suggesting that one adult took out one book a month, two books on CD, 10 downloadable items, three magazines a month, one DVD a month, attended two programs, and used one museum pass and asked one question of our reference department staff. And that is calculated at a value and cost of all those items at $883.50. Now, the family, I won't go into all the details, but I expanded it. But in both cases, I was being very, very cautious. Most families do not take out one children's book at a time, believe me. There's a pile of children's books that come with, that go out with families. But the average family with this very limited economic estimate could be saving $1,518, whereas the average cost in our budget is $110 per capita. This includes books, DVDs, programs, storytimes, museum passes, and magazines that I hope you are all familiar with and, and using these. Next slide, please. In terms of our goals, we are currently working on a strategic plan that will help us determine next year's, next year's goals. We are involved in quite a few of your goals. And just to give a few examples here, we continue to explore ways to reach all residents through programming, outreach, social media, and a broad collection of materials. We look at programming, website accessibility, and diversity of our collections, supporting your goal of welcoming, welcoming and supporting diversity. We partner with local partners, as well as most city departments, very frequently with recreation. But we, we serve, partner, or are happy to support every department in the city. Guitar Sundays with PMAC is an ongoing popular program. He talks with the New Hampshire Black Heritage Trail is another six- or seven-year-old partnership. And this year, staff have been very busy working with Portsmouth 400 on the 101-Object book and on programming. We also look to support new and existing businesses. And we do this with partnerships with SCORE, working with economic development and with our chamber. We look at outreach for this. We offer training for computer support for businesses. And we are looking at other ways to support them in our reference department, talking with businesses about their needs. Finally, our, one of our biggest goals always is to maintain our high level of customer service. We do this through continuous professional development, through an analysis of our policies and procedures, and through feedback from our programs. And now this year, through our strategic planning, hoping to hear from most of the city in our survey this year so that we understand how the changed environment post-COVID is affecting families and individuals in Portsmouth so that we can better suit our programs and collections to them. Our other big program, as you're aware, is courtyard renovation, which we requested in the CIP this year. And it is to support ongoing but increased programming in that beautiful space that we would like to be able to use safely and better. I want to stress that for those city goals that we do not actively participate in, we are ready and willing to participate through educational programming, community conversation hosting, as well as promoting city government activities and amplifying messages from other departments through our social media. Thank you for your attention, and I will be happy to take questions.
Thank you, Christine. Counselor Bagley?
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. My first question is regarding the part-time salaries. That seems to have increased rather substantially. Could you just expound on that?
Well, the part-time salaries were affected by the increases through the union, not through any increase in our personnel.
Okay. And then the- And then, the follow-up question I have for this, and I support the library's mission, and I think the investment that it makes in the community saves us money in the long run. But, going with the theme of if we were to reduce the budget, unfortunately, areas such as the library are probably places where we would have to look for funding cuts. Would it be possible for you to identify some areas, not necessarily that we would cut, but that if we were to cut now or in the future, what areas you would suggest, so to speak, or say are the ones that would have to be considered if there was a need?
Frankly, I would have a lot of trouble with that, because what we're focusing, what we're identifying now in our budget is large increases across the board in inflation. We've had up to, I think, 75% increases in things like periodicals and newspapers, books. Online downloadable books through the publishing industry keep increasing in their costs. And obviously, the care of the building is, with things like utilities, we don't pay for the actual care of the building, but the utilities also increase. So, the amount that is, we're already, I can't give you the number, I'm afraid, right here, but I believe that over 50% of, well, I know, over 50% of our budget is through our salaries. And so, we're pretty tight on programming and collections, along with utilities and the rest of the budget.
Yes, thank you. So I guess what I'm hearing is if there were to be cuts, they would probably, we'd have to reduce the number of periodicals, books, and resources such as that, if we were to look for savings.
Correct.
Thank you.
Assistant Mayor.
Thank you. And thank you so much, Christina. I just want to say thank you to you and your staff. I'm here pretty much weekly, and everyone is amazing. And I would like to also touch on whether residents are using or not, the downloadable services and the plethora of books and periodicals and utilities we have on there. I think it's really something that during COVID was so utilized by so many residents. And so I just wanted to, as we have done with a lot of departments today, I just wanted to say thank you so much to you and your staff.
Thank you, Assistant Mayor. I would like to mention, in terms of those downloadables and books on CD, for a few years, we saw a dip in some of those, like DVDs and books on CD. People were getting more streaming at home. We've noticed across the country that with inflation, people have dropped some of those services and come back to the library. So we're seeing an increase in some of those downloadables, DVDs, and books on CD.
Thank you, Christine. I would, the only thing that I would love to see, and the library is great, I'm glad we don't have a line item for my wait fees for stacks of children's books. Yeah. If you wait long enough, there's a replacement cost there. It's truly a fantastic opportunity here. And I remember the 106 process, wherever I got to speak on the RFK coming down, and this building going up. One of the commenters was talking about the, that the old RFK was filled of a lot of memories, but this building would be filled with new memories that children would make. And the future has really been that. There are so many opportunities here, and you serve such a vital need in the community. And I'm happy to see that we're punching above our weight in terms of 60% versus 15%. One of the things that I would like to see, though, is a guidebook to taking advantage of all of the resources, not only the library has to offer, in terms of like 3D printing, and, you know, periodicals and DVDs, but across the board, I think that we could do a lot better of highlighting, and this maybe could be in Monti's wheelhouse, but highlighting the things that you can take advantage of. I think that inflation has certainly caused more people to look at the budget and the streaming services that kind of prepped up on a lot of folks to be able to pare back. But where those things can be replaced, from the library standpoint, but across the city, I know that there is, you know, new residents and new parents sometimes understand that maybe more than some of the folks that have just lived here for generations, because there are so many things that we've added. And being able to highlight those things in a guide would be really helpful. But again, just really appreciate everything that you and the rest of the library does here. Christine, you stepped in and made a real impact and carried on the work that has started here. So, thank you for that, and thank you for the use of the space today. It's much more bright and sunny.
Thank you. I would be very happy to see that guidebook as well. We had a businessperson come in last week to make photocopies and said it had never occurred to her that she could come do her photocopies at the library. So, we would be very happy to get more word out, and we'll talk to Monti.
Thanks so much.
Thanks, Christine. Take care. So, Mayor, if you'll take about a half an hour break. Kevin, we can sign off. We'll be back on at 1:00.
Thank you. All right. Thanks, Kevin. All right. Welcome back to the afternoon agenda, starting with the school department. Then we have police, and then fire. So, Superintendent, Mr. McGoughlin, I get away.
Great. So, it's a pleasure to have the opportunity to speak in front of you. The beauty of this year and having some hand-holding from folks is that you've been dealing primarily with our very capable business administrator, Nathan Lenny. Today, I'll take the lead, and Nathan will be here to come rolling in from the bullpen as necessary. So, our agenda today, in terms of the slides I want to work you through, I want to give you a little bit of a frame about what, kind of where we're at as a school district at the moment, how that influences our process, our budget process. Talk a bit about the crosswalk city goals and board goals. Also, talk about our current strategic planning process that we're involved in, and how that will affect future budgets, and that we're in a little bit of a hurry-up-and-wait situation in terms of how that's going to influence things. Then I'll walk you through a high-level summary of the budget itself. We'll talk budget drivers from this time around, positions that are in and out, and then a few lingering questions for us, even on the heels of whatever gets accepted this time around. So, in terms of transitions, you know, the first thing to think about is there has been significant, and I'm sure most of you are aware of this, significant change in leadership positions in the district in the last year. So you have myself, the assistant superintendent of schools, the high school principal. In most districts, those three positions, those are your frontline people. Those are the face of the franchise. And all of those roles have turned over. And at the same time, we also have turned over the Robert J. Lister Academy Director. So we're in a period of significant flux. And while that organizational flux is happening in terms of personnel, we're also in a situation where we're, I would say, we're kind of moving out of the COVID war footing and trying to now transition into the beginning of a post-COVID environment, while being cognizant of the tail of the effect of COVID on our students and our families. So, as we move into the next slide. So, the easy thing for us in terms of citywide goals is that, you know, you folks have been wonderful in providing us a singular, really a singular goal. While we touch a lot of things connected with what you're trying to do for the city, we primarily are connected to providing an educational environment that supports the school board's goals and its pillars. As I came in this year, the board established those first two things as annual goals for our team. And that was to do some, to begin a process of strategic planning for the district, to look at a three-to-five-year plan for the district. The board felt that while the schools were a reasonably successful set of schools, that there was an opportunity, if unified, in a more formalized way, for us to do even more. And in addition to that, there was a request to enhance communication, develop a communications plan, and to think very carefully about how we could be more effective in terms of two-way communication with all of our stakeholders across the community. In addition to that, the next subset down below are the existing board pillars. These four things broadly define how the board wants to think about what's most important for the school district to be pursuing: equity, opportunity, community, and student wellness. We are in, we're really thankful that one of your members is a part of our process. We are in the process of that strategic planning work right now. And if you're a parent, you're probably sick of me with videos and notices trying to tell you about what we're up to. What we're doing is we're working with a firm out of Portland, Great Schools Partnership, to go through a two-stage process in terms of our strategic planning. And the first part is to create this portrait of our graduate, which is really just a metaphor. And it, the idea is to say, what do we want? When a kid goes through the Portsmouth School Experience, as they're crossing the stage, what do we want that kid to be like? What do we want that new member of our community who is exiting our school system to be like? And in order to do that work, we look at these four questions. Right now, tonight, actually, and I know you guys, well, if you really wanted to stretch out a day, you could do all this. You could run over to my focus groups at the high school, and then run to your own session this evening. But we've been involved in a series of focus groups across the community, and we're looking at these four questions. What do you want the young people of Portsmouth to be, to know, and to do? What are the skills, experiences, tools that you think will be needed for young people to achieve these things? And what ways do you think Portsmouth School District currently helps students develop these skills and habits? And what ways do you think the school district helps students have experiences that help achieve their hopes and dreams? And then, question for, in what ways do you think we're deficient? Where can we do some additional work? So we're sitting down with people across the community. We had a few, we had two different sessions at Wamisett last week. We have two different sessions tonight happening at the high school. And we are working with PHA around another set of sessions to happen at Gosling. When this work is done, we're going to sit and compile some of what we initially have received, and then we're going to be developing community-wide surveys. And that will all go out to all of our parents, all of our students, people generally in the community, to chime in on this. Because our goal is to create this, what is the North Star? What is the endpoint that we are trying to achieve as a district? Once that work is done, we will create a draft portrait, which we will then turn back to the community for additional comment, give folks an opportunity to tell us, you know, are we hitting the mark? Are we off? How do things look? And then, once that's done, as we roll into the fall, then we'll turn over that North Star to our professional staff to say, okay, now let's build out that three-to-five-year plan, and how do we get to this endpoint that we're desiring? So, this current proposal is not built on that community conversation, but is instead built on those previous pillars that I addressed before. I think most of you know this, but our budget process, for us, because we are going through the school board, really begins in August. We start having conversations about, with principals, around trying to frame what we're looking for them to bring to the table. We're having conversations about kind of fiscal limits, of what those proposals should look like, and then programmatically, what we're hoping for them to do. So, 30,000 foot in terms of connected to those goals that I showed you before, this is where we are in terms of the overall proposal to you folks. About $60.5 million in the FY '24 budget. It's an increase of a little over $2.5 million in overall growth of 4.48%. And it includes a net increase of 1.66 FTEs. Now, if I can get into a little bit, some of the breakdown, and actually, we go back to that slide just for a moment. That would be great. So, the FY '23 budget, after we can finish, after we finished up the collective bargaining agreement transfers, ended up being $57,980,000. The elements inside of our increase, the elements are salaries. So you take that, 2.5. Inside of that is a little short of $1.2 million in increase in salaries across the board, about a half million in benefits, and then just short of $1 million in additional operating expenses. The, that, way that breaks down in terms of percentages, salary-wise, it's about a 3.8% increase across the board on salaries, 2.8 in benefits, and 10.9 in the operating side things. All right. And as we move into some of the drivers, first, you know, we had those wage and salary adjustments. This is all, these are driven, what's in there, by collective bargaining agreements for each of our associations. The paraprofessionals are the only group we're negotiating for for next year, so most of these folks are set. All six CBAs, just to keep in mind, they were similar formats to what you're used to, where we had a COLA adjustment. But all six CBAs included a COLA adjustment with a 3.0% floor on where that COLA adjustment would lie. On the health insurance side, 6% increase based on the 10-year rolling average of rates and what we had in terms of new positions. Again, as I said before, just short of a half a million dollars. Of that, about $60,000 includes the impact of new positions. As we move down into the benefits and payroll impacts, I think I had mentioned the previous slide, $350,000 on this. This includes a 1.9% increase in dental insurance premiums, which ends up being about $38,000. FICA and retirement adjustments to the tune of another $300,000. And then, an increase to our workers' comp premium, another $22,000. Finally, we do have some, the savings have decreased, and we're on the retirement benefits. And the teacher contributions have fallen from 21% to 19%. And then the rate for employees, non-teaching employees, went from 14% to about 13.5%. Other ongoing drivers for us, special education out of district tuition services. There, we continue to see an uptick, small uptick, in the number of students who require specialized programs that we're not able to, we're not able to perform inside of the district. But, more importantly, this increase is connected to the costs for those third-party providers. And in particular, it's not just tuition costs for the program, but transportation costs to get students out to those programs and back. We have some energy increases built into the budget as well. The electrical supply rates are up 60%. And then, natural gas supply rates are up more than 40%. General student transportation continues to be, continues to be a cost driver. And we're adding an additional 5% from multi-year contracted service increases. All right. So that leaves us, inside of this, before we get to Mr. Lister, we get, the, that leaves us with property and liability assurance increases, some stipends, some additional funds for extended-year services, which are special education summer programming, and then a hodgepodge of other operational budget lines that get us to an additional $60,000. In terms of positions, these are the positions that are coming in and out of the city budget. So, positions that we cut as part of this proposal, we had a vacant family outreach position that had sat vacant for more than a year. We had central office. As that has not been filled, we have, we decided that in order to find some cost savings, we eliminated that position. We also reduced an elementary teacher. That cut will be felt at Little Harbor School, and that's due to enrollment. And then, in terms of positions in, there's an additional special education case manager. There's a middle school counselor who's coming over from the ESSER funding, a middle school math tutor, and then a .16, which basically pushes someone out to full-time in an English position at the high school. Lingering questions for us, things that we're still kind of jostling with. We are about to enter the last year of our federal COVID funding, which for us is We are about to enter the last year of our federal COVID funding, which for us is ESER. We have several positions that continue to live in ESER. Those include outdoor education, a social worker who's at, primarily at the middle school. And so as we come back a year from now, we know we will have to come to some conclusions about, about those positions, and whether or not we're making an additional ask for the city budget itself, or whether we're coming to the conclusion that those positions are no longer needed because we are not in a position to fund them through federal, federal dollars. We also know that our budget next year will definitely be driven by the work that we do through this portrait of a graduate work and the strategic planning. So we don't know what that outcome's going to be, so we're not, so it will be interesting to see what that's going to do. And I think there's an ongoing conversation with the community about what we can best do to enhance school safety. And we're in the midst, have been in the midst even prior to our most recent events, of a district-wide audit in conjunction with the police department and the fire department to look at, look at school safety, what we are currently doing, and what we can do better. So that's my initial stuff, and I'm happy to answer questions if needed.
Counselor Boglum?
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Zach, for the presentation. I have a couple of questions. One, you mentioned the reduction of one elementary school teacher at Little Harbor due to enrollment. What is the enrollment looking like at all our schools? Is it going up, going down?
So the trend, the trend is definitely down. And I think that's a, that's a trend that's across northern New England in general. But it is something that, when I look at our long-term planning, and I think one of the, I've heard conversations amongst the council around our affordability of our housing stock. And I think one of the things that's going to be interesting is, are we starting to price out families, you know, in our community? And if that's the case, what I worry about long-term is, as my enrollment dwindles, does that start to affect the economies of scale that I can use as part of what we're doing in the school district? And does it start to have an impact on the types of programming we can offer? So for us, in terms of long-term, it is definitely a consideration and something we're looking at. But we are down over a 10-year stretch. I can find, I'll find the exact numbers for you, but I want to say we're down 200 over a 10-year stretch, and could be another 200 over the next 10 years. So that's, that's the equivalent, you know, over a 20-year stretch of what we have at some of our elementary schools. Now, that doesn't, that doesn't, that doesn't, you know, that's all over different grade levels. That's not like just 200 kids in kindergarten who aren't going to be present. But it does get us into some questions, long-term questions about, you know, about buildings, about facilities, and what's going to be necessary, and where we should make investments, for sure.
Thank you. And my other question, I know I mentioned it at one of the city council meetings, and just being a graduate of the school system of Portsmouth High School and Dundero School, Portsmouth Middle School, you mentioned the ongoing enhancement of school safety. When I was a student, we had Officer Friendly, you know, he went around to all the different elementary schools. But that's something that, one idea that I had, but I don't know if you could just touch on, you know, what you're looking at as far as, when you're looking at the enhancement of the school safety.
Sure. I think, so let me speak to the SRO Officer Friendly question, because I, you know, I think in general, when we look at it, so if we were, Chief and I have talked about this a bit, if the goal of SROs, in a response to like the situation that we had most recently, is that we're going to have an individual, an armed individual from law enforcement at a door on a daily basis, you know, we're, you're looking at, I don't know, I mean, I'm assuming, first, that would be four people. Every building that we have in the district that's not covered right now, there'd be the three elementaries, but also Lister as well. You've got to train those people, you've got to hire those people, you've got to outfit those people. I mean, that could be a million-dollar investment year one. So on the school side, when we think about that stuff, one, part of the school board response, and I, this is, Nancy's right here, so I'm not, this is, Nancy's like, great if the city council wants to pay for it, but if the school department doesn't want to be responsible for those funds. But more importantly, we would, on our side, in all honesty, when we think about how to keep our schools safe, what we see most of the time is that school safety needs evolved out of kids and families who feel disconnected from our schools and from our community. And that's where the risk comes from. And so for us, if you were going to make a million-dollar investment towards school safety, we'd say, take that million dollars and put it into social workers, put it into people that help us, mental health professionals who help us with kids who are struggling, because we think ultimately that's going to be a better investment in the long run and is going to keep the schools safer. If we were to move back to, I think the Officer Friendly model was to move between schools, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And then, so I, so I think in that case, I mean, in my experience, a lot of SRO work prior to the kind of, the waves of school shooting concerns was really connected to community policing, and it wasn't around protecting a building as much as you get to know law enforcement in your space. And as you're a kid, you're growing up, and you're like, oh, I know Officer Friendly. He's great. I trust the police. I'm happy with that. I can, you know, if I'm concerned about stuff, I have somebody I can go to. So, so I think now we're trying to kind of retrofit what was a model for something else into a discussion of kind of enhanced security guards. And I don't know that that's necessarily the best utilization of our law enforcement assets, but I'll leave that to Chief.
Thank you. Counselor Boglum?
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Zach. I'm happy with the school budget as presented. I think if you look at the tests, and I, I'm not a big believer in school testing, let's say, but I do think it shows trends, and the trends are clear, you know, that scores and everything are down statewide as well in our schools because of COVID. My daughter's a sophomore at the high school, so I've, you know, kind of gotten to see the, the effects of COVID in real time, and I think, you know, we need to do everything we can to, to get the kids back on track. One of the things that was happening during COVID was there was free lunch and breakfast for everyone because of the federal funding. That has run out. The New Hampshire House was looking at increasing the income limits substantially to, so that more families would qualify. Unfortunately, that did not pass. I understand it would be probably too big an ask in the neighborhood of a, over a couple million dollars, just to provide free breakfast and lunch across the board. That, you know, kids not being hungry and class size, to me, seem like they are the two single best indicators of the success of a school system. Are there things that we're looking at to kind of augment those programs that have gone away and to mitigate the rise in class size as our?
Needs change? Start, let me start first with food service, and then I can come to class size. So on food service, I think there's a couple of different things. Now, first, the board, prior to the House vote, had done, we were working through a pilot project to mirror what you guys do in relation to advocacy work on the, in terms of trying to inform the legislature about what we'd like to do as a board. So we had, our first pilot submission was to have the board vote to support that particular bill, to say that we think that kids can't learn when they're hungry, and so that should be a baseline, a baseline thing that we're going to do. Now, I say that and can tell you, Nathan, I want to make sure I get this number right, $187,000 in the hole.
Projection.
Hole, and we put "hole" in quotes. So our food, some food service programs try to have the fees that are coming in from students and the money we get for reimbursement from the, from the feds balance out the system and have a zero-based system. Now, we're, I've been in a former district where, if we were $20,000 over, that was a big deal, and that was cause for concern. Now, here, we're, we're, you know, we're pushing $200,000 in terms of, in terms of the cost of the program versus what, what we're bringing in. So we have that issue that we want to resolve. We also know, we're also having ongoing conversations about the quality of the, of the food that we're producing at this point. There's a lot of interest in producing better-quality food from better, better, like more organic products, also doing a better job of addressing the variety of different populations we have in our school district, including lots of students who, whether by choice or through culture, are vegetarian. And we're not necessarily doing a very effective job at that as well. So we are in the midst of, about to have two different board meetings, where we'll be introducing some, that concept of the board and talking a little bit about what can we do, how many, how much of the solution to some of those issues is budgetary, and how much is it other types of things? So I think we're about to enter that conversation, and I think, on the heels of that, a year from now, I'll have a much better ability to talk to you about that. In terms of our class size, I think we are, I think the class size story is varied from school to school right now. So I know, for example, we had an influx of students right before the beginning of the school year at Dundero. So we had some high kindergarten levels at Dundero, but those were not necessarily equally reflected across the school district. So I don't think, at the moment, I would not say that we have a class-sized problem where we're, we're too big. I think we, at times, can have a distribution issue. And the board explored this year, and I encourage the board to explore it, so the new guy would not have to explore it, the possibility of redrawing the elementary school map, looking at where the growth in population actually is for families. And ultimately, they determined that they felt for now that we were in okay shape, that we didn't need to redraw those lines. We did, we had a couple of spots that were on the edges of some of those maps, including the condos down at the bottom of Kate Street and the Beverly Hill Project, all, both of which are heading to Little Harbor to help offset. Where we see the decline, the biggest decline in enrollment, is actually within the Little Harbor District. And we do think there's a direct correlation with, with housing prices and, and where people who are moving into our community can settle. So those, it's the best second. You want to follow? I don't know if you, I didn't answer you well.
No, no, those were excellent answers, and I'm happy to hear about all the work going on in regards to food security. And, you know, I, I hope that Portsmouth, as a community, is willing to support the whole funding, if you will. And I hope the school board brings forward some more ideas to make sure that kids aren't going hungry in schools.
I think, I think, again, not just in terms of, in terms of the amount of food and addressing a lack of food, also the quality of food, I think is something you will hear from us in a year.
Great, thank you.
Counselor Dunn?
Thank you, Your Honor. On the subject of quality of food, prior to the pandemic, there was a USDA grant, which the city utilized for farmer school, and then they're able to keep it going after the grant expired, but I think during the pandemic, that position went away. So just one thing to consider is doing something along those lines.
Yep. And I think if you don't have, with programs like that, if you don't have folks who are kind of spearheading it, it's easy for it to get, to get lost, if I agree.
Assistant.
Thank you. Could you give us a number of positions and also a monetary number for the long-term inclusion of the ESER positions? It doesn't have to be.
So, Nathan, you want to?
We're good.
Yeah. Start scrambling, Nathan, start scrambling.
I'm going to have a couple number questions. So if you have to come back on the 22nd with some more detailed answers, that's absolutely okay.
So what's, how about I move to your next question?
Yeah.
And then, we do that, Nathan, might save the day.
I'm looking for the breakdown, because it's not in here, the breakdown of funding for Lister Academy.
Okay.
Is that, is that listed here, including, is it listed under the high school in here? Because I'm not seeing it as a, maybe I'm just somehow not seeing it, but I'm seeing all of the other schools listed as individual?
Go ahead, Nathan.
You guys can, you want to ask them right here?
Not on Zoom, they can't.
Yep, come on up, boss.
I would just tell you, Lister Academy is a, call it a self-funded program, so it runs out of an enterprise. There is in, in our Cost Center 165, as part of the out-of-district tuitions, if you will, there is a transfer that's made from the general fund into the Lister program each year, but it's funded by tuitions that flow in representing SC-50 kids and private or other district tuitions, because it's a placement for a number of students from regional school systems who send. So it is, in that regard, I guess, call it a self-funding enterprise. So you don't see it in the general fund, but it runs a budget, 800, 800 grand, 750 grand, something like that?
Is it possible to get a breakdown of that, like we have with the other schools, where it has like administrators, professionals, pares, clericals?
You sure can, yeah, because there's only seven of them.
Yes.
There's only, yep.
Yeah. I think that's it.
If you wanted to, I mean, I guess I.
Yeah, go ahead, you got the.
I'm trying to run numbers quick in my head. So there are three other positions that are housed right now and funded through ESER?
And that's not including the one that is?
So there are two, there are two positions coming out of ESER in this proposal. These are the same two that we talked about last year, the math tutor and the school counselor. There's also the social worker position, the math interventionist, and the outdoor ed. I think our initial proposal coming out of the school board was to also transfer the math interventionist and the social worker into the general fund. So I would anticipate that we might be talking about that transfer next year, because the funding will run out otherwise. And we're still working on how the outdoor ed program fits and works in the school department, so that may or may not be included in another year. And those, all in, the math and social worker, math interventionist and social worker are 135 or 140,000 each with salary and benefits related.
And I would, and I would just say, especially, I would be remiss, since I have my school board chair, the original, the original proposal passed by the board included those additional, those additional positions. And then in consultation with the manager, we came to a determination that this was not the year to present that as part of the.
But we could anticipate that they would be presented next year.
Well, I think, I, I would say you can anticipate that we will be evaluating over the course of this year, the, the value of those positions and trying to weigh them against what we think is responsible to request. I think you can, I think for sure, and this was a big part of the conversation, we were just talking about school safety and part of the school board level conversation, and part of our experience with the position, is that the social worker position that we have at the middle school, people are seeing the value in a very, very deep way in terms of the ripple impact that that's having on a variety of different things. So I think I can, I can pretty much guarantee you, we will absolutely be coming back with that social worker position, saying we want this as a long-term thing. And then the other positions we'll be evaluating over the course of the year. Now, again, our, that evaluation is only so long, because we really, we start this conversation with principals in August, and then we're really come to some initial judgments about what we're going to present to the board by the end of October. So we've got a short window here to try to come to those kind of, those conclusions about what we're going to continue to move on and ask you to fund in the city budget.
Thank you.
Yep.
Counselor Cook?
Thank you, Your Honor. And thank you so much for presenting to us. Welcome to presenting to the council. I, I can appreciate the position you're in. My mother was a superintendent of schools, and I know how hard it is that first year, because you're doing all your evaluation of your programming. So I, my first question is around the declining enrollment, and we're adding positions, clearly, but we have a trend towards declining enrollment, which means we're eliminating a teaching position this year. Is there an effort to, rather than eliminate positions, because the last thing we want to be doing is laying off people, to retraining and shifting them into alternative roles rather than adding new FTEs?
Yeah, I think, I think we always have an interest in, we have long-term staff who could successfully transition into a position. I think we, you know, we have an interest in doing that. I think the challenge is going to be, and this is not unique to Portsmouth, this is across K-12 education in the country and the region, is that what we're seeing is an enhanced need for students in what we'll call, in supportive services, we'll call it. So again, that goes back to mental health, social workers, et cetera, is that what we're, what we're finding is that those strains that students are feeling in their own mental health, sometimes it's related to COVID, but sometimes just related to other things. I don't know if, for those of you who went, I thought, if you went to TEDx the other day, John Broderick, Judge, Judge Broderick did a wonderful job of explaining how the world has changed for kids. And so we're not just aware of that, we see it. We see the manifestation of that inside of our organizations. And, and that puts us in a position, very often, too, is that the rest of that social safety net, not just in New Hampshire, but in New England, is just not present. So if a student has those needs, very often, we do not have a third party to send those students to. And then we're in a situation where a student's not getting access to their education. We might be considering, you know, we're not going to just expel everybody, you know? And so what can we do? And then we, as an organization, start taking on some of those additional, I would call them, social safety net types of activities, because there's nobody else to do it. And we know those things are in the way of students accessing education. So, back to your original point, it is difficult for me to retrain a teacher to become a psychologist, for example. I hear what you're saying, though, there are, that's on a sliding scale. So I think when we have the ability to repurpose folks in different types of programs that are addressing different needs, we'll absolutely take advantage of those opportunities. But I think there is a, we are finding a skill gap sometimes in terms of our needs with our student population and what a lot of our folks are trained to do because schools were different 25 years ago. And, and so sometimes we can't bridge that gap with training, but when we can, we will.
I want to follow up. I, I can appreciate just how difficult this is. I have a 17-year-old, so.
There you go.
I have a high schooler, so I know that there's been a huge shift in just.
So I know that there's been a huge shift in just mental health issues for young people. How aware are the, are the teaching staff of the fact that we, we do have a long-term declining enrollment? I know that we have a lot of senior teachers, so we probably will have a lot that retire, so we don't have to lay people off over time. But I'm kind of watching this and thinking, you know, I want to make sure that we're being proactive in this sphere, because, you know, I don't want to be the city council that had the, was laying off teachers.
You know, I think, you know, so I've, again, come from a very different community than Portsmouth in terms of the, the ability to raise revenue and to pay for services. And with us, we were very often faced with situations where we'd have to lay off folks. And that's really bad for, it's bad for morale. It's bad for hanging on to quality employees over the long run. So one of the things we were, had to be very strategic about was looking at, looking at reducing staff through attrition. So if someone was a retire, that was a, that was a moment in time for us to be very thoughtful about, do we actually need this role? Not just in the next year, but in the five years to follow. Because we don't want to be in a position to, to bring in staff, train staff, make the investment in people, and then have to lay people off. And I think we have to do the same thing here. And I think that is not, and I don't think it's going to be as extreme, but I think just being thoughtful in that way is important for the, kind of, the stability of the organization.
Thank you. And I, just one final question. You said that the costs for electricity and gas went up significantly, and I can see that in the budget. I didn't know, does the schools, do the schools negotiate with Department of Public Works on overall?
Yeah, it's a common...
Yes, we're at that same bid, we're at that same bid factor as Peter just gave, man, it'd be chuckle.
Okay, so you're in a two-year contract now for, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Sister Murr?
I'm just curious, I know the SRO funds are ending, but have they all been at least put towards something? You don't have any money that you're looking to figure out where it fits in?
We will, we have some. So we're, so we will still do some spending into next year. And we still have some flexibility with, so I would say this, not every, not every dollar is encumbered at this point for a specific project. We have some summer stuff, we have some flexibility around some summer programs for students. And we will have a little bit more flexibility. I don't know, I'm trying to think about the size, how to quantify the size of that opportunity.
There are still, sorry. I didn't bring numbers with me, but I, I think right now, from the last conversations that we've had with the board, there are, there's an earmarked plan for each, each chunk of the dollars in terms of after-school programming, summer programming, et cetera. We just talked about the positions. Had those, had those positions come into the general fund, we'd be talking about repurposing those dollars as their earmark. Right now, they're probably, again, everything's earmarked, but there's easily, I don't know, 200, 400,000, depending on how you look at it and what choices you'd like to make, that haven't been spent and could be repurposed to do something different if we wanted. But right now, the only outstanding question really is about some of the capital work that we'll do.
Okay, thank you.
Included amongst that, going back to Counselor Blalock's thing, was a large, we're in the midst of a large two-way radio purchase. So right now, we don't have the ability to communicate between buildings and, and folks. So we're putting, you know, we're in the process of bidding out repeaters and walkie-talkies across the district for, again, back to some of the security concerns we have about our ability to communicate in those situations.
Counselor Taylor?
Thanks, Zach. And welcome to Portsmouth. And I'm delighted to hear that you now live in the city and you're there like us. But last year, we approved 10, an increase of 10 positions. And in part, that was because during COVID, the budgets had been very lean. We'd actually gone down in headcount. We heard from parents that there were some services that went away. The farm, the farm program went away. But also last year, we had this one-time gift of some state education money. So it was easier to up the headcount. I think Counselor Cook is right that we're in a, we're working in a context of declining enrollment of a couple points a year. But the other part of the context is we've seen real learning loss from COVID. And I know, for me as a counselor, last year, I wanted to put resources back to get kids caught up, because they had really suffered. And I'm wondering, first off, are we seeing any catch-up? Or are we seeing a learning gap that we still need to close?
So the, the data we had last year primarily, the areas where we're concerned, which I think we had here somewhere in math, math was the place where, so some of these investments are connected to, to what we saw. So the, there was a bigger decline in math than we saw in other, other locations. We are right in the midst right now. Students are taking next round of state testing, which will give us another kind of sonar ping on, on where we think we are at the moment. But I, I think broadly, when we had this conversation with the board, I think the picture was, we weren't seeing significant gaps that were in, outside of the math thing, which was a little bit bigger than some other stuff. We weren't seeing gaps that were significant compared to what was happening with all students across the state. So, so we are, what we're really curious about is some of those, some of those choices we made over the course of last year. Is that translating into an acceleration learning for students? And we will know in the next couple of weeks, you know, where that is, at least in regards to state-level testing.
Yeah, and I know that your predecessor would, would say that for the, the students who were consistent academic achievers, they weathered COVID OK. It was the kids in the middle or the bottom who kind of got lost with online learning, and that was a real challenge.
And that's a conversation, and that's a parallel. So one of the things, one of the decisions we made early this year is that we were not going to go, there were some folks who encouraged, instead of snow days, let's do home remote days. And I think our concern was, in looking at that, is that that had very different impacts on different populations of students. And students of means, a day at home with online learning is reasonably successful. But if you're not one of those lucky students, it tends not to be the case. And so one of the things we were, we were trying to do in parallel to what you're mentioning is just that, knowing that that was, had different, different levels of impact on different types of students.
So given that we, we funded an increase of 10 positions last year, and then this one-time state money goes away, if we had to come back and ask you, how could you complete teaching and learning as the mission within existing headcount? Do you think you could do that?
Well, I think that's my job. And so, you know, the, I'm going to live within reasonable fiscal constraints that the city gives me to live up to the mission. And so I know, I think, you know, having just gone through a wave, a bubble of federal, federal money, that we will most likely be in a position without asking you for significant, for significant increases to our, our impact on the taxpayer, that we'd be coming back to you. And we're going to have to look at, how are we going to continue our mission potentially with less, with less folks? Because really, you know, 85%, 80% of our budget is connected to people, so.
And then, could you just help me understand? You know, we had a conversation with DPW Director Peter Rice, and he was saying, just remember that, you know, we take care of maintaining all the buildings and even cleaning the buildings and things like that. And I was, can you help me understand the custodial support that we've got? 26 positions throughout the district, 11 positions at the high school, three to four at each of the elementary schools, three to, three at the middle school. Is there any possibility of synergy with DPW and...?
I, I think that's a conversation, I think I'd have to draw upon my facilities director, Ken, Ken Lynch, for some additional kind of talk. I know our concern, you know, early this year has been an inability to fill some of those positions until just recently. And so we've, we've really struggled to maintain buildings to the level which we would like to maintain buildings. And that really has been the dialogue. We have not had a lot of conversation about the cross-pollination of DPW with our folks around those types of, those types of activities.
Or, or even if you're faced with open positions, is there a way to put all the pieces in a hat and pull them out of a way that might be more efficient?
Well, in terms of custodial services or just in general, I mean...
Custodial.
I think, you know, I mean, we're constantly trying to evaluate, how can we be most efficient with the staff that we, that we have? At the same time, the challenge, particularly at the high school, the challenge is that we, and this is part of our conversation about school safety, too, is when school day ends, we become civic access, assets. And we're civic buildings. And there's a ton of activity that is not necessarily our activity that we are funding. And so at the high school, if you go to the high school on any given, any given day, there's, there's just a lot that's happening in that. And some of that is directly connected to the schools, but chunks of it are not. They're community, community activities. Same thing with, with the middle school and the kind of flowover of Connie Bean.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thanks, Zach. I've had a couple of questions, going back to Counselor Blalock's question. How much do we pay, how much does the school department pay for the three or the two SROs currently?
From my understanding, currently, our contribution, and I'll let Nathan yell at me if it's wrong, is we, our contribution is limited to about $40,000 for the, for the two SROs combined. Is that correct, Nathan?
Correct, it's 50% of the middle school.
Okay, 50% of the middle school. That's our, that's our current contribution across the board at this point.
Okay, and the rest is picked up in the police department? So I guess, to assume that that would change as dramatically as it would have to, to cover four SROs at a million dollars, that seems a little, how do we get to that math?
Oh, I'm not talking about the cost of the school department. I'm just saying the cost. I mean, I'm, I'm assuming you're, and again, this is very much spitball, and I apologize if, if that creates a, what seems like an outrageous number. I'm just thinking about the, the salary, benefits, fit-up costs of each of those individual officers. And that's broad, and if my numbers are way off, then I apologize.
I think what, at least the community is, is reference to me, and it could be in a unique position, just, I guess, being the mayor, but also being a, you know, having a six-year-old in the schools and, and, you know, get to walk. I see you drive more often than walk now, Zach, but we drive sometimes, too. That's when we, we're peeling out of there at 7:59 and trying to get a pill. It's that there is, and to the point, and I've definitely heard the point as well made by the school board and the chair, Nancy Cleber, that if there is a, an effort to invest the money to prevent these, it might be better served investing in the, the social and, well, just the, the social well-being of our children that, that could be, you know, if not intervened with the perpetrators in some sense. The recent example has, was a, was a kid, and at first, you know, I was, I guess, as, the more I found out about that situation with the amount of, you know, ammunition, firearms, and body armor that they had in the back of their car, it wasn't from Portsmouth School Department, wasn't a Portsmouth grown kid. And so while I agree to that argument that we should invest in our kids, we also, I believe, have a responsibility to live in a world where not every community is going to invest in their children in the same way. And I would hope that there, if not in year one, in a timely enough manner, at least a, an estimate, an estimation of an actual cost of what it would bill be to bring an SRO to each of the middle, or elementary schools. And if not in year one, you know, making sure that we could do so in, in a glide path to do so. With regard to the Lister Academy, I think that for a number of reasons, you know, outside of just the Lister Academy, which I think is useful, and I'd be interested to see if that could be reimbursed in some way to the tuition costs therein. But to see that, you know, it is a community center, from our standpoint and the city's standpoint, where we're directing, where we hope to direct all of the recreational activities, you know, from an equity standpoint. So it, I think in and itself is a, is an important conversation. Also, Seacoast Community School, I don't think would be opposed to having, you know, more full-time. And I understand that these are costs, and they're literally costs that I feel like is the, you know, the last thing I want to spend money on in the city of Portsmouth is, is, is things that I can't see a tangible benefit. But the goal, I guess, would be to spend the money and never feel as though we had to use it, because there is a, you know, if you're looking at the communities, whether it's Dover or Newmarket, you know, where there are SROs to be able to say, you know, deter somebody from, from coming into one of the elementary schools. That's the, I know that that's a difficult ask. And I know, we'll, we'll talk to the police next. Getting the right person is incredibly difficult to do so. And I think that we're all, we're all aware of how hard it is to fit the right type of cop to a school, especially in elementary school. Because at the end of the day, you know, it's safety, but it's also, you know, the police are, you know, it's, government is to keep us safe. First responsibility. And if we can't have a connection to the elementary school with a, with a good cop in there, that's a, that's a failure. So I know how hard that is. And I don't think anybody in Portsmouth is expecting, you know, it to happen tomorrow. But I think Portsmouth is expecting a plan to be able to say yes or no to through, you know, both the school board and the city of Portsmouth. And I do think that we owe them the responsibility of, of putting it on paper to say, this is what, this would cost, and this is what the timeline for us to be able to deliver this to the city of Portsmouth would be.
No, I appreciate that. And I think, you know, when we think about our responsibilities as an organization, if you think about it in terms of concentric circles, that first circle is safety. And it's, you know, and when a child is dropped off with us in the morning, that you feel that, that your kid's going to be safe with us. I think, as we talk about those things, I think it's part of a broader conversation, because there's a lot of things we can do with safety. We can not have windows in our schools. We can, you know, there's a, there's a lot of different things that we can do. And I think we just want, we're looking to make the best possible decisions we can to keep kids safe and further our mission at the same time. And we're just trying to balance all those different threads simultaneously. So I appreciate what you're saying. If my spitball number felt irresponsible, I apologize.
It didn't. I'm just, you know, again, I would like to be able to have the conversation as a community, knowing that I feel incredibly safe with my daughter in school and then going to Treehouse today. And that's, you know, but not every parent, you know, gets a call from, or runs into the, you know, Deputy Chief Maloney in the stairwell of City Hall saying, hey, there was just a threat and this is what's going on. So, you know, I have to understand that I'm in a somewhat unique position as all counselors are when, you know, if they had kids in the school department to understand that. But also that I can't answer the question of, you know, why do, you know, why does Newmarket, a town of however many town, you know, people, you know, have an elementary school, SRO, and, and we don't? You know, that's a, that's a tougher position to, to be able to, to have to say, well, it's because of this, and we think, you know, better funding. There's a lot of parents, you know, that, that that's not a, you know, whether or not it's the best use of funds or not, it's more of a binary thing in, in that case. And I think we have to be cognizant. But it's nothing to do with your spitball number. I put out way worse spitball numbers than that, so.
Counselor Butler?
Thank you, Your Honor. And just one other question. If, is there any measurement on how many kids in Portsmouth attend private schools? And like choose not to attend public schools? Because I didn't know if, like, the measurement of enrollment going down is because...
To what extent is that, are families choosing to go to an alternative?
Right, right, right. I could see that being a variable. I could even see where this school safety issue could exacerbate that variable, where some parents, maybe they're like, okay, we're going to pin the money on our own and send our kid to a private school where we know there is a SRO or something like that.
And I don't have, I don't have those figures today for you.
Okay, thank you.
I can see what I can do.
Thanks, Zach.
All right.
Appreciate it. Oh, sorry, Counselor Bagley?
Thanks, Your Honor. Just in regards to the SRO question, I really think this is, you know, we should get the numbers and then, you know, listen heavily to the parents that have kids in the elementary schools where there currently aren't SROs. But I will say that after the Uvalde tragedy, I heard from probably 40 or 50... But I will say that after the Uvalde tragedy, I heard from probably 40 or 50 parents, and it was pretty evenly split, either very strongly in favor of an SRO or very strongly against the idea of an SRO in the elementary schools. And both sides had data to back up their position. So I, I think it's a two-pronged conversation. One is, is what are the costs? And two, is this something as a community that we want in our elementary schools? And I don't think it's as obvious as, and the answer is I used to think it was.
And I, and I would just say, I think that's the, I think one of the things is some of the community energy around this obviously comes around this most recent event. And the timing of where that is in relation to a conversation about expending resources is not, you know, we don't have a lot of time. So I think internally on the school side, what you hear, what I hear from my administrative folks is it's basically what you're saying, it's worthy of more study. And making sure that, that we, we take the step forward in a way that is reasonably designed to make schools safer and that we make sure that we don't do it as a, as a, the same emotional, my kids are in these schools, right? So, you know, we don't do it as an emotional response to a moment that was really scary. So I think that's what I hear internally from my folks.
Right. Thank you.
Counsel Coe?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just, I wanted to weigh in for a second on this line because I was actually teaching in a classroom when Columbine occurred. I'm kind of dating myself a little bit, so I know what that was like from the perspective of a teacher. And, and I know the, the emotions run high around this, but I also know what it's like to be the parent of a kid with a diagnosis who would qualify for 504 or an IEP and what the statistics look like on SROs and, and the impact that they sometimes have on already marginalized communities within schools. So, so as a city counselor, I feel like it's, it's very important for me to stay out of this decision-making because that's why we have a school board. And so I, I'm really going to be looking to you and to the school board for the advice on what we should be doing with regard to the schools. Because I don't know the latest research on this. I don't, you know, I want to make sure that we're making a sound judgment. And I know that the school board is, is much better versed on that, and so are you, than I am. So, thank you.
Thanks, Zach.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay. We have Police Chief Mark Newport.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
So in the interest of time, we have a lot of information on our slides, so I'll touch on them briefly to save more time for questions at the end. If that's okay. This is, you know, our police department is here to serve our community, and this is a shared responsibility amongst everybody within the community. Here's a snapshot of how our police department works, collaborating with city departments, social agencies, law enforcement partners, and residents to keep our community safe to further our mission of community commitment, compassion. Our department is progressive and always forward-thinking. That involves hiring the right people. Recruitment and retention is our biggest concern right now, as we, everyone is well aware that across the nation, police depart, police officers are scarce and hard to find. And to fulfill our commitment to our community, we, we have to be able to hire the right people. And through our personal and training division, we're working hard and doing that. And all the days of us having people lined up at the door to take, to come onto the job are no longer there. We actually have to turn over rocks now to find officers. With that said, we're an accredited police department. So on the good end of that is by being accredited, we've been ahead of a lot of the reforms that have taken place across the country. And even here in New Hampshire with the LEAC group, most of the things that have been recommended, we are already doing, so it hasn't been too much of an adjustment. Budgetary-wise, there's been some additional training that's been mandated that we've had to add into our budget, but for the most part, through our, we are accreditation and some of the things we've already done with our personal and training division, we are ahead of the curve. To complete our mission, our biggest asset is patrol. They're on the street 24/7, 365 days a week, and interacting with the community and patrolling the streets proactively and reactively handling issues in Portsmouth. As part of our resources and assets in the department, we have expertise from these specialty teams and programs to protect the community. An example is the Seacoast Emergency Response Team, and we continue to work collaboratively with many communities to recombine resources so that all that allocated necessary required personnel is not just coming from one agency, but we're all working collaboratively together.
Chief, do you mind speaking closer to the mic?
Okay.
Thanks.
Next, we're talking about dispatch. The dispatch is a nucleus of our operation. They're usually the first to interact with people calling into the department and then who are asking for help, general assistance and information. They relay that information to our officers who are out there serving and responding to the calls. The women and men of our department are on call providing information, handling safety checks when officers and fire personnel are on calls, as well as with administrative work and monitoring cells, monitoring the cells within the department. For the dispatchers, they, they just do more than just answer telephone calls. They dispatch police, they dispatch fire, and they also dispatch DPW after hours. And they also help monitor what's going on around the department during the day.
Chief, do you want to speak to where you are with coverage on dispatch right now? Because you and I just.
Yeah. So we, you know, again, as part of the recruitment and retention, we, we were struggling to hire dispatchers. At one point, we were actually down to two dispatchers this year, and I can happily say we're up to seven right now, so we're getting there. As you'll see further, and one of our asks in our budget is to add the 10th dispatcher that we originally had, but since we were down so many bodies before, we inadvertently left it out of our budget last year, but we're asking for it back. Investigations, we investigate crimes, provide community outreach to help protect, to help and prevent crimes, give residents and business owners the tools that they can use to help prevent becoming victims, and also tech techniques. And we do like site, site evaluations on what businesses can do to help prevent crime from occurring in their business. In addition, with our investigations, investigative division, we also handle dignitaries that come into town as we'll get in to start the election campaign for the next year. We'll be asked to help out with dignitary business when presidents come in and candidates running for elections. Can move on to the next one. Crimes against children, we are the host of the task force there. This has been an invaluable resource to our community. It's grant-funded for the most part, which funds a lieutenant and three-quarter, almost 80% of a detective's position. But in addition to that, we, we, as a department, receive a lot of additional training and equipment to help us investigate these cases. Crimes against children is one of the fastest-growing crimes in the country, and we are the resource for our state, New Hampshire. In addition to police agencies all over the state, they provide investigators and train and use combat on these issues. Go on to the next one. Gold case investigations, we still have a few unsolved homicides here in Portsmouth. We have not forgotten them, and we are still actively working on these cases. And that takes some funding, which is built into our budget to continue working on and solving these cases. This is basically everything we do in the community. The pictures themselves are worth a thousand words. We're constantly engaging with the community and an opportunity to, for our community to meet us, as well as us to meet members of the community through many events that we participate in, such as Coffee with the Cop, National Night Out, and presentations to the elderly and youth throughout the community. Going to our IT and our fleet, I know the city department has their own IT, but we have additional restrictions and requirements as a law enforcement agency through SEJUS, which is Criminal Justice Institute, that requires us to take additional steps above other departments as far as protecting people's personal information. And therefore, we have a lot of software, additional software and equipment and personnel to run all of that equipment and software, as well, as well as the laptops that are in the cruisers. So. Moving on to the fleet, we need the vehicles that we have to be able to be out in the community. A big point of us is to be visible, and we need visible, visibility through our cruisers, our motorcycles, our bicycles, and all the other equipment that we have, crime scene team vans, to be able to serve the community the way we do. Here's another piece through the police commission, where we're actively involved with the community. It's an extra layer of citizen oversight with the elected police commissioners. We work collaboratively to ensure and we provide the best services to the community and to our fellow city departments. And this slide here highlights what our current ASG are, and this is part going back until last year. The request was made to possibly ask a social worker. We had planned for a strategic plan. We're trying to implement it in this current budget to work with, with the increase of mental health people that we're dealing with and a liaison to all the social services to try to prevent and help people without having our officers having to get involved. We have the mobile crisis team now, and this social work within the department would be a liaison that would work between all the different agencies. As I stated earlier, about the, back in place, the 10th dispatcher. And then the other increases that we have would be the additional installment for training that I had spoke of before. Overall, our budget is only 0.54% above last year's FY '23 budget, and we were able to accomplish that, Duke, basically because the retirement costs went down. Open for questions.
Assistant Mayor.
Thank you. Thanks, Chief. So not for an answer for today, but I would look for on our next session on the 23rd, a detailed breakdown of our overtime. I know last year we, we talked about, there's obviously shift differentials and kind of how it breaks down. But I'm looking for kind of a more detailed explanation to that roughly almost a million dollars.
Okay. The majority of our overtime now, and Taryn probably has that already done, but is because of being so understaffed, we have mandatory requirements to.
Yeah.
Put personnel there and fill in that stuff. But we can, we have the breakdown down to the penny.
Awesome. Thank you. And then a question about details and rates of details. Are we finding and/or as we're getting detail requests, if it is putting an officer into overtime, are we, are we charging to make sure that that overtime is covered by the detail rate?
Yeah. So the way outside details work is they're not, the city's not paying any of that. It's all an outside vendor, and the vendors pay the complete cost of the police officer. There's overtime, the overtime rate, their benefits, their retirement and all of that.
And is that billed through the department or?
Yes. It's billed through the department.
And is there, as just as I think about, you know, looking at revenue sources, is there a way to potentially, unless it's, you know, against an RSA, to put in a buffer to, to increase that rate? So say it's a, it's a 5% increase, and that 5% then goes back into the police budget or goes back into the general fund?
So as a part of that, so for example, I don't know what the rate is off the top of my head, but say it's $60, the officer receives probably maybe $50 out of that, and then the rest of it go to admin fee, which is, covers, it's not in there per se as a.
As a revenue item, yeah.
Revenue item, but it covers for city, city admin fees for personnel to, for billing, postage or whatever.
And do we increase those, you know what I mean? As, as we look at everything has gone up, I guess I wonder when the last time we increased those were and if we increase them annually?
It increases annually with a call.
Awesome. Thank you.
Counsel Bagley?
Thank you, Your Honor. Thanks, Chief. It looks like we're back to, for traffic stops, about one an hour, 365 days a year, 24 hours a day. Is that more or less our pre-COVID target number? Are we in that, are we close to back to normal?
I would say it's probably close. I mean, I mean, we don't have a quota per se, but I think our motor vehicle activity is definitely picked up to where we were pre-COVID. I mean, Deputy Maloney is the expert in this, which I know he's seen traffic and safety. But is that pretty close, Mike?
Yeah. In fact, that number.
Do you want a mic?
Yeah.
All right. Deputy Chief.
Thanks, Chief. Yeah. So Counselor, that, that number, I ran that number within the last three months, and that was for calendar year 2022. So, you know, taking the pedal off, no pun intended, on, on traffic stops, pre-COVID, post-COVID, that, that, that no longer exists. And is, you know, the, the department shifts and focuses its effort on things depending on what the community is asking us to do. And since I've been here, they've never stopped asking us to slow down cars. So traffic stops, motor vehicle enforcement, still right on track.
Thanks. And just because that is such a popular request at PTS, I'll highlight, it's my understanding that all the moving violation fines go to the state, not the city for the most part.
Yeah, for the whole part. We don't see any revenue from any tickets we write.
And it's the position of the police department that allowing the officers to have discretion when they make traffic stops is essential for morale and as well as them to be able to do their job in a good and effective way.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah. I mean, we would, we'd never dictate how an officer concludes a traffic stop. I mean, at the end of the day, the officer's intent on that stop is to change the behavior. And if the behavior changes with a verbal warning, you know, we allow that certainly.
Great. Thank you.
Assistant Mayor. Sorry. This is more of a request, I, I think because, you know, your department's increase is so, so minimal right now, I would, I'd request the consideration to not delay the hire of the social worker. I think that we know that it could potentially be a, a hard position to fill. So I think that the sooner we can get that funded and get it at least out in the, in the market, you'd have my full support on that.
Yeah. Thank you.
Counsel Tabor?
Yeah, Chief. Just make the case for us, for the social worker. What, how do we operate as a better police department and how's the, the city safer?
So I, I think we have been dealing with a considerable uptick in mental health people that we've been dealing with in our community. And even though we have the mobile response teams now that are in place in the Seacoast community, where the ball's kind of still somewhat being dropped is whether we're dealing with them and referring them to their services or the mobile teams to them, there's no follow-up behind our initial contacts with them. So if we have our own in-house social worker, they can then therefore not only be out there with us if we need be when dealing with some of these people, but they can assure that the follow-up then continues and to make sure these people continue to get the resources that they need because many of these people we'll, we're still dealing with time and time again because there's no follow-through once we have the initial contact with them.
And will that give Patrol Division and Detective Division sworn people more time to do their jobs?
Yes. And that will prevent an officer, which we currently do not have that specific officer, have the time to, to do that follow-up, which will be passed on to a social worker. They'll get it right from our, after our initial contact and as part of their routine duties. An additional part of that is they also work with juveniles and youth to try to address it early rather than later in life.
Right. And it's good to hear that we're making progress on dispatch. We're at seven out of 10 positions filled?
Knock on wood.
As of today?
As of today. As of today.
You know, what are the challenges recruiting for that?
I think the challenge is it's, it's a very difficult job. It takes a special type of person. The learning curve is not easy. You know, we've been hiring newer people that have no experience as dispatching, which is a longer learning curve. We've been fortunate in our, in our last two hires that they were already certified dispatchers, so that will help speed along the process. But I think just because we've had such a revolving door, it's been hard to get a nucleus of people there because we have to train these new people. But people that are working 80 hours a week are very difficult to be able to do their job and also train new people. So the, the more experienced people we can get, the more trainers we'll have, the better learning experience. And then just addressing the work experience, we've never had enough people, you know, in a perfect world, sometimes we can have three people in there so that someone has some relief, they can get out and go for a walk. Right now, they work in a room like this, and they can't leave because we don't have enough resources there to give them, you know, a 20-minute break. So that's what we're trying to address.
And last question. In your strategic plan goals, one of them was to update our KLEA accreditation, I think?
Yeah. So we're in the process of that. We just went through a re-accreditation. We actually will go out to Oklahoma City for the next KLEA conference in July. It'll be nice and cool and hopefully receive, receive our award for completing our re-accreditation. From all the information we've received so far in our review, as we did very well, and we're expecting to receive our second accreditation.
That's great. I, I don't know that the community knows that's happening, and that's, that's a great thing.
Counselor Bowler.
Thank you, Your Honor.
And thank you, Chief. I would just like to ask you, I think you heard our conversation earlier with the superintendent about the school resource officers. Just any input on how you think the school resource officer works the high school and the middle school, and whether you think it would be appropriate at the elementary schools, or any conversation you've had?
So I, I agree with Zach, the superintendent, and we have spoken about it and spoke with the manager. I, I think it's a decision that we have to make as a community as a whole. I think in our strategic plan, we had talked about previous before any of these more recent events had happened about bringing back an elementary SRO that we had previously. We had one SRO that kind of covered the three elementary schools. And as he stated, there's, there's a lot of moving pieces to that. It's not just as simple as we take a police officer and sign it to the school. There's got to be, you know, the right program in place, the right expectations in place, and most importantly, the right officer in place. And, you know, as we're struggling to be fully staffed now, we currently have five openings. So to add additional force, four offices on that and four offices that can work in a school environment is asking a lot of our department right now. I think moving forward and planning for it properly and what those positions could look like or what other avenues we could take with, with some of the resources we have being more visible at the schools, which we're currently trying to do now, are this all open for discussion. But at the end of the day, we're here to provide a service to our community, and we're going to do whatever we can to fulfill the needs of the members of our community, whatever that need is.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Just on the cost of an SRO, I can tell you it's approximately about $120,000 a year per person.
Right. So I guess now I got a question on that. So $120,000 a year. School is in, you know, session September to June. What is, what do currently the SRO officers do outside the time that they are attached to a school?
So the one benefit of the SROs is because they're only, the summertime that they're off, the SROs come back and fulfill their role in patrol as putting extra bodies on patrol. For the most part, you're talking maybe two months. But since they work in the school year and they're pretty much expected to be there, that's sometime where, you know, they try to use as much vacation time as they can to recoup and plan, get ready for the next school year. So.
Would it be possible, given the fact that we are a, what people tell me, a tourist destination, and part of our tourism, the high period, at least is when other people, you know, schools are on vacation, to align some of the patrol needs when we have to flex to a greater demand in the summertime to align with the no demand that would be an SRO's responsibility during the, the summer months?
Yeah. So that's, basically that's what I was saying. So when they're not in school, they go back into patrol and will pretty much be helping dealing with a lot of the tourist issues that we have.
Okay. So, I mean, again, the, there's, oh, city council has zero authority to tell the school department how to spend money. That was highlighted by Counselor Cook. We also do have a responsibility to be somewhat responsive to our constituents. Many of our constituents, the recent example, reached out more aggressively than I had recalled in the past, I think, because aside from it being a, a threat to, or an incident at another school is a threat to our own school. And so it hit differently for a number of, a number of parents that, in addition to the false, you know, alarm that we'll likely have more of in the future. But I think understanding for our responsibility in this and given that we control the budget, it would be very helpful to understand how it could be, even just dusting off the books of how we used to do it with an SRO that, that floated among the elementary schools, would be very helpful, I think, for that sharpening the community conversation on whether or not this is something that we would be moving forward with. Given that there are still five positions that are underserved, given the fact that that could align potentially to, you know, some of our higher patrol needs during the tourism season when we grow to a city of, you know, 60, 70, 80,000 people. And that could align with, you know, no school at that time. Again, one of nine, but be very helpful to understand the cost implications of that. And any plan that would be, you know, put forth would obviously have to be costed out. But if there's opportunities for synergies with existing needs and maybe a potential to incentivize or provide you the ability to incentivize the right people to apply to that, I think that, you know, potentially could be a win-win.
Right. And I agree with you. And I think, you know, in a perfect world, we'd be able to do that. I think our biggest roadblock to that right now is just finding the personnel to be able to do it. I think we could find the money if that's what the council wants to do and what the community wants to do to do it. It's, you know, we're, we have three open contracts right now that are in contract negotiations, and a part of that is going to be, you know, I think everything I hear about our officers and through the community is that our officers are doing great. And in order to have, keep continuing getting great officers, we need, they need to be paid like, paid like great continuing officers. And, you know, like I said earlier, is like we're fighting with every other police department in America right now to recruit the best police officers. We've got away with it for a long time in attracting lateral police officers, you know, based off our culture here, based off the support we have in our community. But in trying times that we're in now, things have changed. You know, people are not coming into this profession like they used to. So it's like, almost like finding a needle in a haystack to get a, a person that wants to be a police officer nowadays. And they have the options of doing it pretty much anywhere they want. So in order to be competitive, that's what it's going to take.
Understood. Thank you. Oh, Counselor Tabor.
Sorry, Your Honor. Just thinking about the dispatcher situation and the challenge of hiring there. And I don't know the shift coverage demands. I mean, obviously, you need a minimum number of dispatchers every shift. But would it make sense to create a senior dispatcher position which would pay a little more and maybe stem some of the turnover? And if we had that, you know, folks could move up to a higher pay grade, maybe create stability? And would we possibly able, be able to go back to nine if we did that?
So we already have that position in place. We have a lead dispatcher, which, you know, when you're here, I believe you got to be here for two to three years to be able to reach that level. It's a promotion process. And then above that is dispatch supervisor. So we have that in place. I think it's, it's multiple issues and being able to obtain, just like finding police officers, everybody's dealing same struggles of finding dispatchers. So again, you guys are doing very supportive. They got the 4% increase earlier in the year. Like I said, we're working on contract negotiations, so we're, we're addressing the pay. But it's just, it's, it's, it's a tough work environment. It's a tough job to do. It's just as tough as, you know, some of the things that the officers do on the street, but they're in, you know, inside a fishbowl.
Thanks.
Counselor Dunn.
Thank you. I don't know if you'll be able to speak to this, but the superintendent made a comment which made me think he had a one-way radio where they could just listen to the police. Is that indeed the case? Or would be, and if it is, is it possible just to get two-way radios so they can communicate from each school to the police? And again, you might not be able to speak to that. I may have misheard what the superintendent said.
So our, our goal is, oh, I'm sorry. So our goal is to be able to, in, of course, with partnership, because we don't want to screw up communication, existing communication with first responders, but our ability, in my former position, I had the ability to both interact with our first responders and all my different schools at the same time and my bus garage. So our goal is to be able to do all of that via one device across, across the city.
And would that device be paid for out of the school budget or out of the?
This was out of the, we're going to use the, some of the federal dollars.
Okay.
To pay for that.
Thank you, both.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
It's pretty cold.
It's colder there, it's colder here. No matter where we go, it's cold.
Go ahead, my Jack.
Thank you, everybody. Enjoy the rest of your session.
Did you get a sandwich?
No, thank you.
I like that dance you did at Roy.
That was great.
My cousin is Joe Boe. I think he was ready to take.
The city manager is turning the camera.
Keep touching it and not keep moving it.
It moves, yes.
Ready? Okay, great. Good afternoon, Your Honor and Counselors. Thanks for having me. I appreciate the opportunity to be able to talk about your fire department to you and the, the community at large, probably a viewing audience of thousands, I'm sure, here this afternoon. But to talk about the fire department. So helping me run the fire department, Assistant Chief Jason Janay, who's here with me today, he, he's the Assistant Chief of Operations. He keeps the place, keeps the place running, keeps the trains on time. He's in charge of training, operations. And then Deputy Pat Howe is our Deputy Chief in charge of community risk reduction. So when it comes to plans review, inspections, code enforcement, and public education, that's, that's his bailiwick, and that's where he goes. Today here on the next slide, we'll talk about what we're up to and our essential services and appropriation. Then, of course, overseeing the fire department is the, the Fire Commission, which Commissioner Dicky Gamester is here today in the back of the room. But as I'm sure, I don't have to explain to you all, but by city charter, they, they run the fire department and tell me where to go and what to do. We'll begin with a brief overview of the fire department services. How is it Fire Station One on Court Street is Engine One and Ambulance One, where we have one captain who serves as the shift commander and four firefighters. This station protects the downtown area and the majority of the neighborhoods associated with downtown out towards the cutoff where it's first due, as we like to call it in the fire service, where it'll arrive first, is the area from the creek on Lafayette Road inward and then out towards the traffic circle and then inward towards downtown. Then Fire Station Two out on Lafayette Road is the home to our aerial device truck two and ambulance two is staffed by one lieutenant and four firefighters. It protects Maple Haven, Ellen Park, Lafayette Road, Arbor View, White Cedar Boulevard, and that part of the city as well. We also have our spare aerial ladder out there along with our hazardous materials truck is stationed out there. And then Fire Station Number Three out at 127 International Drive, it's currently one lieutenant and four firefighters. About 30% of the time right now, we have ambulance three available to us and that we're able to utilize it. And then the other two-thirds of the time, we have to rely on an ambulance from a different district to come out there. But that, that covers Panaway Manor, the trade port, the highways, Greenland Road, and the upper end of Woodbury Avenue. Interestingly enough, this, this fire station is the second busiest fire station behind the Court Street Station. There's an awful lot of activity and a lot that goes on in that part of the city. Next slide is our organizational chart, which has remained flat. There are no new positions in this, in this current budget, but you will see the, the stations broken down here as well. And then we'll move right along. Our, our mission statement, right? Pretty simple, pretty straightforward. We're looking to provide quality emergency life, safety, and prevention services for our citizens, businesses, and visitors with the highest level of valor, integrity, commitment, and teamwork and community involvement. There's a swearing-in ceremony from last January where Captain Kenaway was promoted along with Lieutenant Wade and then two firefighters there, Shaw Terrell and Sean Sullivan, who were in their paramedic ticket at a commission meeting. Next slide. And, and here's where, where we tie in with where your goals are at and where we're aligned and how we're, we're trying to tie in. You'll see that picture there was the Assistant Chief Janay and the members of Truck Two assisting at a fire in Rye back in November. Next slide. Our vision, again, pretty straightforward. The vision of the fire department is to be a recognized leader in the fire service, respected by our citizens for anticipating and responding to their ever-changing needs. And the department will embrace new technologies and techniques focusing on training and education to provide the highest level of customer services and satisfaction in a professional, caring manner. That's Lieutenant Reganiti staring back at you there in a great shot. Next slide. And again, just tying back to your, your goals as a council and how we align. That picture there happens to be the, the crew from Truck Two when firefighter Bob Richards retired last June 1st after a 30-year career here in the city. And then interestingly enough, since then, the two, two of the people in that photo were also promoted that you saw earlier. So next slide, we're going to talk about our programs and services. Again, just an overview of what it is that we do. Pretty straightforward, right? Fire protection. We have fire response and mitigation with two staffed engines, one staffed ladder truck, and two staffed ambulances. Again, the, the goal here since 2019 is to have three ambulances so that we have equal coverage in all of our fire districts across the city. And we're, we're going to see a little bit of an increase in this budget, hoping to get there and add some staff. So again, emergency medical services. We have ambulance response and transports for two staffed units full-time, one staffed partially. And then we have advanced DMTs and paramedic level services on the engines. So a lot of times we get the question, why does a fire truck show up ahead of the ambulance? Oftentimes, we can deliver a fire truck quicker than we can get an ambulance there because the ambulance is either at the hospital, turning around, they're tied up on another call. But our staff is cross-trained to not only be firefighters, but also as paramedics and advanced DMTs and the, the same cardiac monitors and different drugs that we administer off of the ambulance, we can give right off the fire trucks. So our goal is to get patient care, right? I want you to think about, you know, like a sports injury, right? We want the, the right people at the right time in the right place. And that's what we're trying to do here. And then our hazardous materials and disaster response, where we have our hazardous materials technicians. in service as much of the year as we can down at the state pier. And then that boat has some firefighting capability on it, and we can also go out and pick people up out of the water. We also have a 14-foot Zodiac rescue boat that we keep in the basement at Station One that's available year-round to get at some of the inland waterways as necessary. Some of our community services you see there through our on-duty and staff personnel, wires down, odor investigations, burn permits, burst pipes, flooded basements, lift assists, you know, people don't know what to do, they call the fire department, and we show up and try and figure it out for them. Next slide. Community risk reduction. This is life safety, fire education, occupancy inspection, inspection, and code enforcement. So we have our Deputy Fire Chief who's in charge of this division, along with two fire prevention officers that are out in the community doing this work and making the contacts out there. Additionally, the fire department, I serve as the Emergency Management Coordinator for the city manager, and that's where we're tasked with looking citywide at updating and planning our different responses, be it radiological, flooding, whatever the disaster may be. But we're working on getting our hazard mitigation plans and our continuity of operation plan. All of our plans are up to date, and they're expiring over the next two years. So we're in the process now of working with Homeland Security and Emergency Management to update those plans and make sure that they're modern and they're actually what we need. Next slide. Bottom slide here, here's my shameless plug for the city's 400th anniversary. On the bottom left there, you'll see a full house out on the front ramp. Many of you were there for one of our open houses that we did in conjunction with the fire societies to be able to celebrate the rich history of this city and its firefighting heritage. And there'll be two more coming up after the parade on June 3rd and again on July 29th. Next slide. Objectives. Here's where we're at. We want to make sure that we strengthen our delivery of service for emergency and non-emergency services. And we want to ensure that the deployment and distribution of personnel, apparatus, and fire stations supports equal coverage to all areas of the city. As I mentioned, we're looking to increase our staffing model here a little bit and get that 30 ambulance on the road more often than it is presently. We want to continue to utilize and train and make sure that our folks are efficient and doing their job with the best tools that they can. And we want to make sure that we're recruiting folks and retain high-quality, experienced personnel by offering competitive compensation packages and a positive work environment. You know, as you've probably heard from the other department heads here, this becomes more and more of a struggle, but it's a goal of ours and we're working on it. That's firefighter Zach Strazuski. He's practicing bailout techniques. Every firefighter is issued a 30-foot piece of Kevlar rope with a hook on the end of it. And as a means of last resort, that hook goes into the bottom corner of a windowsill, and out you go, and you dangle with that 30-foot piece of rope until somebody can get a ladder to you and help out. So, you know, we don't necessarily want to see this ever employed, but we make sure that our personnel are kept up to date on this and that they're trained and that they're ready to go. Next slide. Our next objective here is on fire prevention. We want to make sure that we're getting out into the community. We're increasing our contact with building owners. We want to make sure that the occupancies that our visitors come to this city are safe and that they're compliant with codes and standards. And this is where we're at. You'll notice that our total inspections and our contractor consultants have gone up year after year. Again, a commitment here to make sure that the city is safe and that we meet or exceed our standards that we're supposed to be upholding. Next slide. And then our final objective here is to make sure that we actually do what we say we're going to do and that when the rubber hits the road, that we're showing up in a timely manner to people's emergencies. We want to make sure that we're hitting medical emergencies in nine minutes or less. And we'd like to hit half of them at less than five minutes, right? And I think this slide kind of drives it home. You know, if you think about, if it was your house, your emergency, right, your loved one laying on the floor waiting for help, this is where we're measuring it to make sure that we're in the community in the appropriate places, and we're sending the right people to where they need to be. Like I said earlier, the right care at the right time in the right place. So we'll get right into our request here. We're about a percent over last year's request, $104,000 more. Our big impacts here are on step increases. I have 14 employees that are currently in their first year of employment, probationary employees. Those folks are coming off. And the savings that we saw because we were able to not pay them a lot of stipends because they come in at the bottom, they're not as well-trained, they're training now, and by the time they get off probation, they'll be receiving those stipends, and then they'll be, you know, moving up through the step system. So we're going to see an increase there. And then the coverage line items, we've increased as well, as I mentioned, to try and get that 30 ambulance on the road all the time. And then we've seen some increases in our workers' compensation insurance. Our next slide here shows you the amount of responses that we've gone to. Bottom in red is fire responses. In the middle is the blue for EMS runs only. And then the top line is the combined services. The middle line there, that shows a correlation you'll be able to see. If you look back during COVID, right, when utilization went down with healthcare, where people weren't just accessing the healthcare system unless they were really, really sick. So I can tell you that during those times, that, you know, our patient contacts went down, but the acuity and the severity of those contacts went up and that we were billing for more advanced life support services because people were actually a whole lot sicker before they called us. And then, as I wind up here, we're going to talk about some of our efficiencies on the next slide to remind you of some of the things that we take care of here in-house, that our administrative manager and budget coordinator, Tracy Freeman, who works real hard for us, what she does to make sure that we don't have to have an increase of personnel. You'll notice that we eliminated the part-time position a few years ago, and we're sticking with that because we found these efficiencies within the budget. And then on the last slide here, you'll see, you know, we talked a little bit about building maintenance and public works earlier. We take care of our own building maintenance in-house. Our personnel do the custodial care for the buildings, and then Assistant Chief Janay works with the facility staff for bringing in some of the contractors for the larger repairs and the outside work that needs to be done with the vendors. And then you can see that some of the other things that our company officers do, in addition to their shift work, they're responsible for some administrative duties. And those administrative duties relieve, you know, those of us in the front office of having to do these things, but it also frees us up to do more things. And as a result, in other places, you'll see that there's a little bit more with respect to administrative staff positions to handle these items. Right now, we're comfortable having our company officers continue to utilize these efficiencies. And the top picture there happens to be the crowd around Truck Five as it visited, I believe, out of Don Darrow School for National Night Out. And then the picture next to it happens to be a technical rescue that was performed about two years ago over in Newington. And then down below, we have the swearing-in of firefighter Juan Araga, and then the promotional ceremony for Lieutenant Kenaway being promoted to captain, and then firefighter Wade being promoted to lieutenant. But next slide. One thing I just want to finish with is, you know, as I've gone through this presentation here and I've shown you what we do and the capabilities of your fire department, one of the things is that you've seen a lot of pictures of my staff doing some incredible things. So just, it would be an injustice if I didn't stand here before you and thank them for their hard work, their dedication to everybody in this city. It makes it easy for me to get up and give these types of presentations because of the effort that they all put forward every day. And I hope you remember that. So thank you. But I'll be happy to take any questions you might have.
Thank you, Chief. Counselor Maron?
Thank you, Chief. I appreciate all the information. I have sort of a somewhat two-part question. I noticed that our training, education, and conference line went way up, almost double. And the second part of that is, can you also go into, I'm hoping that some of that money is going to help to ensure all our residents, that if there was an accident with a train in our city, since we do have a lot of residential buildings, including my own that's very close to a railroad line, if you could just give us a little bit more information about the training and what goes around to protect us?
Sure. Thanks for the question. So that training line item that you see, that's in addition to the training that we do on shift for our personnel. The training line item specifically is for outside training, whether it's, we just sent a group of firefighters away for a week to Virginia Beach to be able to train on shipboard fires. So we sent four people down to do that. But that training also includes tuition to be able to send some more folks away to paramedic-level school. So we want to increase the number of paramedics that we have on duty and on our staff in general. And so when we talk about training, we're talking about outside trainings, whether it's through the State Fire Academy, or it's a seminar, or, you know, any type of school that we can send our folks to that they can't get here in-house. The second part of your question with respect to railcar training, about six months ago, we had a railcar class that we sponsored here, and we sent all four of our shifts through it, in addition to bringing in the regional hazmat team. And then, is it next week?
Week of June.
The week of June 5th. All four shifts are getting another familiarization where we work with our safety representative on the rail line here, and they'll bring in some railcars, park them down at the yard, and we'll go over, again, just because we have so many new people, but also repetition means remembering in our line of work. We want these folks touching and looking at and seeing these railcars as often as they can so that in an emergency, they'll be able to retain it. But they'll bring the railcars down, they'll park the train, we'll be able to go over the different safety mechanisms, rail, you know, brakes, hand brakes, pneumatic brakes, all of that. And then, again, the placards and identification system with, for the product that's being carried, and then where the bill of laden is so that we can find, you know, what's being shipped to where and in what order those cars, you know, are lined up on the train. So there is a railcar training program that we have, and it is here in-house. And then some folks could go away to one of the schools, like I mentioned.
Thank you.
Counselor Burden?
Yes, thank you, Madam. This is about the closest thing I've seen today, that's a flat budget. I mean-
Thanks.
I just wondered, my question is, is I know you've had trouble gaining and retaining firefighters. And I just, I know that through the collective bargaining, we've increased some budgets for their salaries and stuff like that. But with a flat budget, you know, very little increase, I just wonder, has it solved the problem?
So in short, not yet. In that, last year, this council, you all voted to grant to our folks who are under contract at the time, an additional 4% increase on top of their negotiated increase. And that has certainly out. But we don't have all of our positions filled, and this budget does not reflect a increase to the collective bargaining because our two units are still out, and that would have to come from contingency or wherever the council saw fit. But at the moment, this budget that you see in front of you is the way it is because we haven't budgeted for that yet.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, Chief McQuone. You appreciate all the hard work.
The benefit of being the guy at the end of the day when you're running late, right?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Chief.
So next up, we have public comment. If there's no other questions from the council before we go.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think this is a question for the city manager, really. I've noticed across almost all the budgets that other operating seems to have gone up. What is really encompassed in other operating for those, for the audience out there? Because when you're reading this, it's not really clear what that is.
Sure. Finance Director Belanger is going to do a better job than I could.
Well, I'm just trying to find, and the budget message at the highlight section kind of itemizes that a little bit because the coding of each of the line items is pretty consistent throughout each department. So let me just-
My question is-
So, okay, so on page 12, if you have your budget document with you, so other operating consists of, and again, it varies because we have general government that houses a lot of this, but telephone, postage, office supplies, advertisement, repairs to vehicles and equipment, furniture and fixture line items, janitorial services, software, software maintenance, and supplies in the public works such as salt and sand. So those kind of qualify as other operating. And there's a few more, but more of the small items.
And the follow-up I have on that is, is this really just a product of inflationary pressures, and that's why we're seeing an increase there?
I would say in a lot of instances, yes. And also could be like software and software maintenance, you know, the more different types of software that we're using. So it could be additional costs, books and periodicals, and subscriptions to certain tools that we use. As I indicated earlier, additional tools such as in the assessing department and other departments alike, so.
If I can add to that, there have been times when there's been a trend in an operating, other operating increase, when staff will try to get creative or innovative and try to figure out how to deal with that. And I think, if he's not here to help me lead on this argument, but Peter Rice would tell you that by investing in the brining, that can help manage the need for sand and salt. So what we're trying to do is understand what falls in that category, and if there are mitigating things that we can do to try and lessen those increases where possible.
Thank you.
What, I guess, just to, how much does it have to be to fall outside? Like, how would we say software costs would be, if it was a new software cost, would we bump it out of other operating into its own budgeted line item? Like, the accounting of software, for example, is not under other operating, it's its own-
That's a capital expense.
Do we expect, well, software-
It's expensive.
Well, like, there could be an implementation cost, but are we separating out the, like, most software now is a subscription model where you pay, like, Microsoft 360 is a, you pay a yearly fee for that. Are we, how are we determining the, I guess, either like, how much does it have to be, or is all subscription just fall under other operating?
A lot of the software is the licensing fee associated with, which falls under IT. And some other are just tools that are utilized within, not necessarily a software. Maybe I missed, didn't use the right term as far as the tools that are used in the assessing office, and more subscriptions to help put assessments on and gather information throughout the city and throughout the state. But the majority of the software, the licensing fee, is in the IT department, excluding the licensing fee in the police department and in the school department. So I wouldn't say that there's a, the line is just that what department is managing that software? So IT, and we are, we have been trying to move a lot of the software over to IT. We've moved some in the last couple of budgets to keep it consistent in one spot.
Thank you. Counselor Dunn?
I almost hate asking this question, but with the threat of a default in two weeks, how could you see that affecting the budget which built may pass?
throughout the city and throughout the state. But the majority of the software, the licensing fee is in the IT department excluding the licensing fee in the police department and in the school department. So I wouldn't say that there's a, the line is just that what department is managing that software, so IT. And we are, we have been trying to move a lot of the software over to IT. We've moved some in the last couple of budgets to keep it consistent in one spot.
Thank you. Counsel Dunn.
I almost hate asking this question, but with the threat of a default in two weeks, how could you see that affecting the budget which we ultimately pass? If there's any way to forecast?
So we had reached out to our financial institution to see how that's going to, you know, affect anything and I think this comes up almost on an annual basis with the federal government or thereabouts, but we are insured and in their perspective, they don't see that there's going to be any kind of impact to us, but we are insured through the FDIC and then we're also insured with the New York Bank also for collateralization for us.
Thank you.
Counsel Bagley.
Yeah, thanks, Your Honor. These are some general comments and questions for the city manager. We had COVID, at the start of COVID, there was a fear that, you know, taxes wouldn't be paid, there'd be a revenue shortfall. If I understand correctly, we actually, our collections were better than ever.
They were, yes.
And so we deferred some capital improvement and investment to future years, which now are coming due. And also during COVID, we had a lot of federal and state monies that were more or less given to the city, so it kind of relieved the tax burden. And over the next couple of years, those monies will go more or less completely away. So it'll be more or less heavily back to the property tax burden. Looking at this budget and the past couple of year budgets, there's been increases in personnel and needs of the city. And I think a lot of those increases are things that we have to do, either for state or federal regulatory requirements, the added need for IT, the added need for legal. I think it would be helpful, and you probably noticed with some of my questions today, to some of the departments, not necessarily for this budget, but looking at future trends, if we could identify areas that if we were to reduce services in the city, we'd be able to save money and lower the tax burden. I'm not advocating the position that that is something we should do, but I think it's worthwhile for the residents to see, okay, if we wanted to lower the tax rate, these are some things that we could no longer provide as a service and then we can have a better informed discussion about where the budget should be.
Understood.
Thank you.
On that, I do think it's kind of incumbent upon us to do that if we see fit. It's difficult sometimes asking a department head, you know, where would you cut? Because if they say, I would cut this program, you know, that employee's like, well, you know, looks like I'm next to go. So it's hard, I think, what we ask the city manager is to put forth a budget that aligns our current services with the asks that we've added and then, you know, we discuss that. I think part of it is, you know, it's a good conversation to have to ask what, you know, cost is, but then, you know, it's on us, if we're not happy with this budget, to lower the budget based on our, you know, our thoughts. It's difficult to defer to the city manager that responsibility or even, you know, the department head further down because, you know, they're putting forth what we've asked for and that's a budget that is below 4.5% with existing services. And so if we want to make it lower than that, I think it's our job to put that forth and ask what the savings would be and then put it to the city to say, hey, this is what we could save, is it going to be worth it? You know, it's been my experience now through four budgets that there's a voice for pretty much everything in this budget if we ask through the city. You know, the retiree with no children might not feel as strongly about the elementary school now versus maybe Spinnaker, but they understand most of the time that that's a needed thing. But there's a voice for almost every part of the budget and we've asked for a lot of things ourselves, just in terms of studying things, as Ben Fletcher pointed out earlier today. But I think, you know, for the 22nd, if there are ways that we want to cut, another way we'd be doing it would be to propose those cuts ahead of time to get a dollar figure on that and then have that conversation when we bring up more questions on the 22nd.
All right. Counsel Tabor.
Do we have an estimate of where parking will end for the year? I know we, like we were, FY '22, we were 9.8 million. We budgeted to go down to 8.3. We typically overperform. Just was curious where we think we'll end up.
I wouldn't want to misspeak today, so we'll make sure we have one for the 22nd.
Yeah, because that, you know, we're looking at using fund balance to offset the tax rate. So I think it would be reassuring to know if we had some surplus coming there.
And maybe related to that, what do we expect the total, I know we're not doing a revaluation this year, but what is our total expectation in terms of property value versus last year? Do we know how that differs?
So in this.
I wasn't able to get my deck done or even started, so it's not going to add to the tax rolls yet.
So in preparing this budget, obviously I consult with the assessor and, you know, she's been looking at new growth without doing the revaluation and she works very closely also with the inspection department. So any permits that are pulled also has an impact on the assessing department. At this point, we estimated and is in this calculation in this budget document, about $70 million of new growth. But of course, that is of April 1st and all the permits are not completed and usually we, not usually, we do get a final valuation, local valuation in the fall. So September 1st is the deadline for the assessor to supply the total assessed value to the state of New Hampshire and it usually takes a month to review whatnot. So we'll have a final number at the time of setting the tax rate, but we did calculate a $70 million growth income, growth valuation in this calculation for the estimated tax rate.
Thanks. All right. Public comment. Just come up to the podium.
One down. Petra Huda, 2A South Street. So again, Mayor, I'd like to thank you for my budget book. I'd like to start with something that just totally baffles me. On page 123 in revenues, we've got marriage licenses are going up 900%. Do you know something? We don't.
Can I interrupt, Mayor? That was a typo. It was an extra zero.
Thank you. That was just a little scary. The other thing on the.
What is scary about love?
Everyone's getting married next year.
900? Wow. Next thing is, I think the police and fire touched on it, but the reason that their budgets are lower is because the COLA adjustments aren't in there. It's in a contingency in the front. The question I would have is, you've got 653,000 in there and we have three units for police and two for fire and then there's a pair of educators. Can we get an idea of which, how much which one is to get an actual for the, for the each department? Next question. So I know we're all looking for to save. So this used to be my life, so I'm going to share. One of the things that caught my eye is the city manager's department. Now, the city manager's department is up in FTEs from when the city manager came in. But the key to all of this is on page 171, which is where they allocate the salaries. So my question is, the city manager has three personnel and the deputy city manager moved in last year, but if you look at page 171, it tells you where the salaries are billed. So this is the key to all of the movement of all of the money that's related to salaries. So my ask is that the city manager's department be combined with the one-person economic development department in a sense to save all of the other costs associated with that because there's a part-time admin in there and when that department was created, you basically added $100,000. And the title of that department head is Assistant City Manager for Economic Development. So in my mind, I would think that that would belong in the city manager department. And hopefully you would get efficiencies and scale and all the support personnel, office supplies, training, blah, 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 suggestion, that's all. Next question is, it caught my eye on IT and we have increased, we were switching from outsourcing to not outsourcing, obviously. We went up just about $2 million. The problem that I'm struggling with is we also doubled our contract services. So I would ask that you take a look at this, Mr. Mayor, because I know you had this discussion previously. The expectation should be when you bring in the personnel, you bring them in at a higher level with more experience and you could start decreasing your contracted personnel. I can't remember what page it is, but on the IT section, we're actually more than doubling in our contracted personnel because of those two personnel in that we're still retaining. So my question also is, there was something at the end of the sentence there that caught my eye, especially on training. So if you bring people in brand new and then you assume that the outside personnel are going to train them, I've lived that for I don't know how long and it doesn't happen because they don't have time. So I guess the question, it begs the question, are we bringing, are we bringing in the right skill sets here to avoid increasing our contractors? That's for you to, just for you to answer. I think that was just about it for now. The other questions I guess I would have is, Counsel Tabor asked about the parking revenues. I'd like to bring to your attention that the last two years, parking revenues were down and we did take out of reserves. So I don't know if I have the page here, but look at, look at the parking section. Look at the parking section. Last year it was 1.945, this year was 1.5, that's what they're requesting. So we are drawing down on our reserves in parking. The other side of that is looking for more revenue and I know this isn't a great discussion item for this council, but the revenue for the outdoor dining spaces that the city manager gave you probably needs to come back and help out there. So some thoughts for you for today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Petra. Any other public speakers? Can it Jason? Jason's not.
He's not interested.
Not interested. Okay. Well, the next meeting we have, obviously tonight, but the May 22nd, oh, forgot about our work sessions on Thursday, 5:30, 6:00 and 6:30?
Oh, there's three different times.
Three different times.
There, I'll post it on the website.
On the website.
5:30 Middle School, 6 o'clock Community Campus, 7 o'clock Senior Center.
Perfect. Special City Manager. And look forward, hopefully, to a discussion there. That's going to be more free-flowing for folks to have more of a back and forth where they can answer some of the questions in person. All right.
Thank you.
Don't have a gavel.[1773.83]